I want to call our Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting of May the 17th to order. Today, the invocation. Today, we are honored to welcome Dr. Clay Worrell for our invocation. He is an author, life coach, a speaker. Dr. Clay Worrell was radically saved after years of struggling with alcoholism, opiate addiction, addiction and depression. Dr. Clay now shares his story to empower and motivate those around him to be epic. Epic Life Solutions is promoted in 178 countries globally to end the hurts, the habits and the hangups and find abundant life within 91 days. Now Colonel Mark Teche, Stephen Dunn, and Dr. Clay are bringing a solution to the nation of veterans for suicide, depression, and chemical addition issues. Welcome, Dr. Clay Worrell.
Welcome and good morning. Thank you for having me. It's always an honor to be here. Chairman Daughery, Vice Chairman Acock, Ms. Acock, Mr. Forrester, Hardison, Williams, and Gurley. Let's go ahead and turn to the Word of God. For our hope, for our hope, Psalm 33:14 and 22, "From his dwelling place he watches all who live on earth. He who forms the hearts of all, who considers everything they do. No king is saved by the size of his army; no warrior escapes by his great strength. A horse is a vain hope for deliverance, despite all its great strength it cannot save. But the eyes of the Lord are on those who have reverence and fear for Him, on those whose hope is in His unfailing love to deliver them from death and keep them alive in famine." We wait in hope for the Lord. He is our help and our shield. In Him our hearts rejoice, for we trust in His holy name. May your unfailing love be with us, Lord, even as we put our hope in You. Let's go ahead and pray. Father, Heavenly Father, Creator of heavens and earth, we are confident that You sovereignly place every leader that You have marked, the days for which You use them for Your purposes. By Your mighty hand, we pray that You would be merciful to our nation, to work in the hearts of those to whom You give authority. We pray for peace. We pray for unity. But whether in conflict or unity, we are confident that You are with us. Lord, guide us and let us be mindful to do all to Your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge.
Our pledge to lead us still to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Do you have my decks?
Okay, oversight already. Commissioner Williams is participating by WebEx and all of our votes will be by roll call. And I assume you can hear us, Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I can.
Great. I was asked to remind everybody to silence your cell phones. Okay. Approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of May the 3rd.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Barbara Acock.
Aye.
Commissioner Foster.
Aye.
Commissioner Gurley.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardison.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
All right, and at this point, we'll have discussion and any adjustments of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some adjustments. Again, we have a couple of budget amendments that we did go over during our pre-agenda meeting that will add to consent. But we have also discussed taking number four from consent and putting that under new business. Motion to approve the contractor prequalification B package for the replacement detention center. That will be under new business as number one. Then we also added to the discussion of possible ambulance purchase with ARP funds. Dave Cutterback is our medical director for EMS. He'll be here to discuss that. We'll have that as number two. And then number three, we'll have the presentation of the county manager's recommended budget. And again, we are moving from the consent agenda, budget amendment number 446. And also.
446 was removed.
Right.
Okay.
And again, for the budget amendment, we discussed the sewer meters at $220,000 that were added to the discussion using ARP funds. And the other thing that I did want to remind you is after our regular meeting, we do have a couple of work sessions. We'll have a work session with Davenport, financial advisors, that will be at 1:00. And then at 2:00, Ms. Barnes has requested a meeting and discussion with the board about some school issues with Dillard and Goldsboro High School and their funding of those facilities.
Okay.
And then we'll adjourn.
And there will be a closed session.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That said, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hardison.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Okay, we'll now go to special presentations. We'll do our service pins and.
So we're going to start with our one-year pins, and forgive me if I pronounce any of these names wrong. So for our one-year pins, we have Michael Gagny, Ray Rhodes, Katie Johnson, Catherine Ashley Brown, Jasmine Turner, Ayesha Hamden, Ruth Evan Smith, Rodney Perry, Jennifer Parrish, and Nora Hennessy-Ludford.
Well, everybody's at work this morning.
Moving on to our five-year pins. We have Kamika Langston, Kristen Mangagna, Adrienne Thompson, Anthony Cape, and James Wade. All right, moving on to our 10-year pins. We have Kimberly, oh, sorry. We have Kimberly Brunson. So for 15 years. Fenisha Evans and Ashley Davis. Moving on to 20 years. Jamie Smith Sturgill.
Well, I'm a platformer.
And for 25 years, we have April McAldeff. Vicki Hill. And Willie Sparks. That's it.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I make the suggestion, I mean, when we call out these names, I would like to know the departments they work in.
That's a good idea.
You know, because I don't know a lot of departments these employees work in.
Kayla, if we could add that, what department these employees are if we're giving these acknowledgements, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, we have a presentation of service plaque to Sergeant Barbara Jean Cook with the Detention Center. And Sheriff is here for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll ask Ms. Cook to join me, please. Ms. Cook has been with the sheriff's office for many years and performed her services very professionally, and we are so thankful for what she's done. We're certainly going to miss her. She's been in our detention center and a leader over there. And at this time, I'd like to present this to Ms. Cook, presented to Sergeant Barbara Jean Cook, Detention Center, in appreciation of dedicated service as a county employee February 1995 to April 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't want me to talk. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There you go. Can you talk, Robert? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Next, on the special presentation, the presentation on foster care in Wayne County and our social services director, Ms. Kimberly McGuire is here for that.
Lovely. How are you today?
Good morning.
Beautiful dress.
Well, thank you. So I'm here to talk about foster care, but what I, my deputy director, Cortina Hamilton, she manages all of my foster care, all the services area, so I will allow her to present and talk about all of foster care of Wayne County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. To talk about our foster care program, first, I just want to give you an overview of how a child comes into the care of the department. Basically, is when the child becomes their severe safety or risk factors that prevent a child from remaining in their home and that their parent cannot provide any other alternative placement. At that point in time is when we will ask for a non-secure custody for that child to come into custody of the department. It is at that time that our licensed worker will seek to find placement for that child. We will try to contact our licensed foster homes and at that time ask if they will be willing to provide care for the child. If they are not willing to provide care for the child, that is when we have to go outside the county or with another other private agency to ask for them to provide placement for our children. At this current time, we have 60 children in the care. 18 of those children are placed with relatives. We have seven that are placed in our own foster homes. We have, and the 35 remaining are placed in psychiatric residential treatment facility, a group home are their place out of county, and another local DSS foster home. So henceforth, the need for more foster families in Wayne County, as we want to try to ensure that they are in a familiar place where they can continue to remain at their own school, they can continue to associate with their friends, extended family, and they can continue to be familiar so that they're not continually traumatized from being removed from their own home. So at this point in time, we are seeking and asking and looking for more people to become foster parents in Wayne County. The process is not that hard. You have to be at least 21 years of age, have a stable income, and that income cannot be dependent upon the stipend that you receive for providing care for our child. We ask that you have a, maintain a stable home. You have to complete a criminal background check and complete a fingerprint check, and that includes all individuals in the home that are 16 years of age and older. We do ask that you do a 30-hour training, which we do the training at the agency. It's usually four Saturdays out of the month. That way, not prevent anyone from having to miss work, so they can do that training on Saturdays. After everything is completed, what we do is we send all that information up to Black Mountain, who licenses, who determines the licensing for our homes and determine the amount of children that you can have in your home. So basically, a person can be licensed for up to five children in their home. That is counting, not counting if you have any other biological children in the home. So if you have a foster family that wants to, that has three biological children, they can only be licensed possibly up to two children. So our greatest need right now is our teenagers and our sibling groups. So that is what we're currently seeking foster families for. Right now, we have a lot of children who we are having to place in psychiatric residential treatment facilities, and that is due to their mental issues that they have. In North Carolina, the wait, there's a wait list for those individuals to go to a psychiatric residential treatment facility. So in that case, right now, about two weeks ago, we had been spending about three weeks in the agency with the child because we could not find placement for this child in a psychiatric residential treatment facility. So at this point, we are looking out of state to place these children. So right now, we're in the process of doing an application for Georgia and Florida so that we can place these children.
Let me ask you a question on that. Can I ask you? Sure, sure. When you place them in Georgia and South Carolina, we're still responsible for that child, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're still responsible making the visits?
Well, what we do is we go through interstate and they'll make those visits for us.
Okay, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So we are, like I said, we're seeking foster, foster families. It is not a hard process, but in order for us to keep our children in Wayne County and to ensure that they are in familiar surroundings, you know, we need more foster families in Wayne County. So we are continuing to try to do some more outreach to enlist foster parents. Due to COVID, we had to stop a lot of that, so now we're trying to get back in the community and just set up at different county events. So if anyone has any events that are going on, if you would let us know, we would love to participate and be there so that we can get the word out, so that we can try to get more foster parents in Wayne County. Anything you want to add, Ms. McGuire?
Quick question. So we do need more psychiatric residential treatments in Wayne County as well.
Well, we need them more in state.
Across the state. You know, I always speak on the county, you know what I mean? But I'm just making sure because I, something that I'll speak to East Point about in trying to get, you know, that service opened up and get some more additional treatments around here.
And that would be great if we could, because that is one of the hindrance that we are having now.
Okay.
Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to commend y'all on what you're doing. You know, a child's a child. It doesn't make a difference what race, what gender. Child ain't asked to come into this world, and for a child to be neglected is heartbreaking. And I just, I just want to commend y'all on what you're doing, you know, because it's, I know it's a big problem, but it takes special people like y'all to deal with situations like that, and I just, I just want to thank you.
Thank you, and we thank you guys for all your support.
Well, one of the things that I was glad to see that you all made this presentation today, I think we do need to get the word out in our community that these children are actually having to leave their neighborhoods and their friends and so forth because we don't have enough foster care families here in Wayne County. And we just urge to get the message out that we've got to have more foster care families here in Wayne County to keep our children here in our community. So thank you again for all that you do, and any way we can help spread the word, we're here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Have y'all, Kim, have y'all got a program or anything that Joel can put on the county website or the county TV station? I mean, any, any way we can get the word out, I mean.
So we will definitely be willing to work with Joel to try to get something out there, information that can go straight into the agency, the application up on the website, anything that we need to kind of make the process a little bit easier and quicker.
Okay, okay. Sure. All right. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the floor is motion to approve Older Americans Month proclamation as presented by Services on 18 Director Paula Edwards.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hope y'all doing well. Thank you for allowing me to come today to present to you. Every May, the Administration for Community Living leads our nation's observance of Older Americans Month, and this year's theme focuses on how older adults can age in their communities living independently for as long as possible and participating in ways that they choose. And the theme is actually for 2022 is Age My Way. And older adults, they do play a vital, positive roles in our communities as family members, friends, mentors, volunteers, civic leaders, and members of the workforce, and so much more. And just as every person is unique, so too is how they age and how they choose to do it. And there is no right way. That's why the theme for Older Americans Month 2022 is Age My Way. And with your permission, I would like to read this proclamation and have the board to adopt it as well for Older Americans Month. Whereas the older adults in Wayne County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities. And whereas the older adults in Wayne County should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Wayne County and urges every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections to each other and enrich our community's quality of life, adopted this the 17th day of May 2022.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say something, Ms. Edwards.
Yes, ma'am.
I visited the center probably about four, five months ago, and I seen a lot of them in there line dancing.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I got there and tried to line dance, but they outdone me. I mean, it was amazing seeing them, you know, the activities that they were doing in there, and I thank you for that, I mean, because it's a wonderful facility if you go in and visit and see some of the things they do in there.
Very lively and full of energy.
Very lively, huh?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I certainly do.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
What's your classification of the older adults?
Well, they have to earn it, put 60 years in.
60 years?
Yes, sir.
Well, I just barely made it.
There you go. Some of us are still working on, we're almost there, but 60 years to earn it and to live in Wayne County, and you can become a member of the senior center.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call vote?
Chairman Daughery?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Acock?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Great, unanimous.
And may I add a couple of things that's going on as well?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you for accepting that, adopting that. This month, we have been celebrating Older Americans Month already, but at the Peggy Seager Senior Center, and I do want to share special activities that we're having this week and another event. We have a main event coming up this Wednesday, the 18th, at 10:00. We will be celebrating Older Americans Month at Herman Park, and it's our annual senior fun day at the park, and we have a really good time. It is open to the public that are 60 and older. We also like to invite the commissioners in your busy schedule. I know we're working on budget, but if you need a little break, come on over and see us. But this event is for, as I said, 60 and older, but we will be doing, we will have outdoor games that get to compete for first and second place. It's just to have fun as well. We'll have DJ Wildheart there, and we'll have line dancing, as Commissioner Acock mentioned, so you can join that if you can keep up. And we'll have a cake walk and bingo as well. Can't, can't miss bingo, right?
Right.
And we will have a picnic lunch served at that time. So if you can make it, and we'd like to invite the public. I would also like to share with the board, and the public, a special event in June. On June 22nd, from 9:00 until 12:30, we will have an elder abuse awareness symposium. This is our third year of doing that. And, you know, scams, they're just new every day. And I don't know if you've heard the recent scam in Wayne County this week. It came up yesterday at the senior center that a senior supposedly received a call from Goshen Medical, and they recognized it was a foreign accent, but they were wanting, said, "You have leg problems?" They said, "Yes," and they were wanting medical information. And of course, they end up hanging up because they realized, "Well, I've never been to Goshen." They weren't even a patient. Well, the number that we called at Goshen, evidently this is a problem, so I want to share this with the public so you can be aware of this. Goshen has a statement, they do not call for your medical information nor to sell things. So if you do receive a call this week concerning Goshen, please, please just hang up if they're asking, and call Goshen yourself to make sure this is a legit call. We have shared it with the sheriff's department, I think with Watson, Kit Waston, Waltz, and Detective Sergeant. He's actually going to be one of the presenters on this day. So this is a great opportunity for seniors, and it's actually open to professionals and the public, or caregivers that really want to know what's going on. We have three presenters. We have social work supervisor Ashley Dawson that will present from DSS about abuse and neglect types of that and what to recognize and how to report. Then we do have Detective Sergeant Kit Walston, who will talk about exploitation, fraud, and scams, which are everywhere, every day. They're very smart and they can get you, I tell you. And we're very fortunate to have, from the Secretary of State Office Agency Legal Specialist Ann Elmore, and she is a great presenter, and she will share with us tools to help achieve what you want and avoid problems with investments, charities, cost savings, and advance directives. There's a lot of things out there that they're trying to scam people. If you want to come, we do need you to preregister by June 15th, but it is on June 22nd. And to preregister, just call Lisa Weston at 7311-589. We'd love to have you here. It's full of information. I learn something new every year.
I got a question. Was that, that number, was it, I think you called it a ghost number, was it actually that, like you were calling from Goshen?
I'm not sure about that because it kind of hit me with that when I was on the way to a meeting, but I had Holly to call, and also to follow through to see if we could find out a little bit more information. You know, so we're trying to, I had sent the staff the information to be aware, and we wanted to tell the seniors at the senior center, and I really wanted to share that today because this is very new, and I would hate for somebody to get caught up in that. And I do not have the full details yet.
Will this class be at the senior center?
Ma'am.
Will this class be at the senior?
Yes, it will. It will be at the Peggy Seager Senior Center. Thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner Acock. Thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner Acoch.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Um, so that's our special presentation. And our next is our consent agenda.
Uh, as the board's aware, we, uh, added a couple of budget amendments, uh, and we have moved number four, uh, to new business. And, uh, with that said, we present that to you for approval.
That was removing number four, four, six, budget amendment four, four, six?
Yes, sir.
And adding the, uh, budget amendment for the sewer meters?
Two hundred and twenty thousand. Yes, sir.
Okay, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Remove.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Chairman Daughery?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Acoch?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acoch?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
All right, and now we're moving to new business.
First under new business is the discussion and motion to approve contractor pre-qualification bid package for the replacement detention center. Um, as we discussed in the pre-agenda, um, we would like us to, staff talked about making some possible changes to that. Currently it lists that you have to have two projects, uh, for jail construction. Again, we're trying to pre-qualify those contractors, uh, to make sure that we're not their guinea pig when it comes to building a jail. So, uh, in the proposal, uh, that we worked with mostly, it does say two contractors. Uh, we would recommend that it is one. And then I think during the agenda discussion, there was discussion if number two and three was sufficient or did we need to identify a timeframe and a dollar amount, uh, for that project.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion. What do you move? To approve it, removing the date and the amount and adding one instead of two. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Um, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes. Uh, I don't mind changing it to one. I'll still like to keep the dollar amount and the date. Would be my only suggestion to safeguard us a little more with, um, the project being current. Um, somebody, I mean, could have been in business years ago. We don't know if that business declined since then, since building something. So hoping they've done something recent to a project that we're trying to build ourselves within the last twelve years if that date is going to be July first, twenty-ten. So I would ask to keep that part, but change the amount from two to one job instead of two.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Commissioner Williams?
I, um, I, I don't have a problem with the, with the figure that Commissioner Foster's stating, however, in the questionnaire, it kind of touches bases on, um, if you've, uh, if the contractors had any issues in the past. It's a, it's a lengthy questionnaire and it actually explains, um, if you've had bankruptcies, if you've had any governmental issues with, with, uh, with construction in the past. So I think that we have those safeguards in place.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none on the motion to approve, um, roll call vote?
What are we, pardon?
The motion is to amend this, that statement to one, uh, construction project and to remove the date and the amount, which is the motion. Okay, and so a roll call vote?
Okay. Chairman Daughery?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Acoch?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acoch?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Item two.
All right. Next, under item two, is the discussion of, um, purchasing of ambulances. Um, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Foster bringing this up and asking for additional information. One of the things that we were looking at as part of our ARP funds, which is an allowable expense, is the purchase of ambulances. And, um, and I do apologize that this seems rushed, uh, but we were notified that the cost increase would be, uh, in, uh, within fifteen to twenty days, or excuse me, I think June fifteenth, I think we've heard a cost increase and we wanted to go ahead and get something in before that cost increase. Uh, but I, I think there was a question of, of making sure this was a part of the rotation, making sure this was a need. And so we do have Dave Cutter back here, uh, if you have any specific questions, uh, about that. So Dave, thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Great.
Good to see y'all.
What questions do we have?
I, I think the main thing is we just want clarification on, uh, you know, there's always a need and we've, we've kind of pushed back a little bit and done some remounts. And at some point, you can't keep doing remounts. I just think we want some clarification on why, why we need to replace four instead of maybe two. Uh, but then again, we understand that, you know, we got the funds here that we're not have to be, we're not be coming out of our fund balance or have they put in your budget.
Yes, sir.
I mean, just, just, we just need some clarification on, on why we need to, to, to go ahead and move forward with four.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we, we have an alien fleet. Most ambulance fleets are alien fleets. If you gave me all the money in the world and said, go ahead and buy as many ambulances you want, we have in eleven stations, buying eleven ambulances at once is the wrong idea. I just have a doomsday mindset and things and, you know, it's great buying eleven ambulances today, but in ten years, would we have the ability to replace those eleven ambulance? And the answer is no. So really want to make sure that we're buying the right amount of ambulances, knowing well that in ten, twelve years, we're going to have to do this process again. To put it into perspective, our remount that we purchased two fiscal years ago, we still have not taken delivery of. Uh, it's that big of a backlog on it. So we're getting in backlogs of sixteen, eighteen months. We hope to have that in the next couple of weeks, but this is just simply a moving target right now. So the, the question came up as far as mileage of our current fleet, and I'm just going to go in order of, uh, mileage on our ambulances and just to kind of talk about some issues that we're having with those right now. Highest mileage that we have on an ambulance is two hundred and nineteen thousand miles. That ambulance is out of service. Our plan for that ambulance is to remount or replace that with this coming, uh, budget season. So that's not even operational, but we do include that as part of our fleet. Second is two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty, uh, miles. That's a gas ambulance that is in the field right now. It's a backline unit, but it's used quite frequently. Next ambulance is two hundred and fifteen thousand miles. Uh, this ambulance was used during a special event this weekend and had to be taken out of service for mechanical issues. Next ambulance is a hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twenty miles on it. That's a diesel ambulance. Uh, this was a great ambulance to have, uh, when we had the gas issue, uh, a year ago, uh, where we were worried about our ability to get gas. We had a diesel unit. That is an extremely expensive ambulance. Now you all see the price of diesel fuel and we've had to put sixteen thousand dollars in that ambulance just to keep it operational. That's our fourth. Uh, fifth is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy miles. Uh, we are, I have asked our operations officer to put that into holding pattern. Right now, we have twelve hundred dollars. We have to invest in that ambulance to keep it operational. And so I've asked him to just put that in a holding pattern to see exactly what the state of our budget looks like right now.
That gas also?
That, that is a gas. We only have, the, the diesel was the only one that we're looking to replace, the one. Yes, sir. Yeah. So that's the, the current state of our fleet right now.
How many, um, ambulances do you have total?
Uh, so we have eleven frontline and six backlines, so seventeen total and, uh, two at the backline are out of service.
So out of those eleven frontliners, what, what are the mileage and, and, and condition of those?
Uh, so what I can tell you is in my three years here, we've only purchased two ambulances that are on the road right now. The rest of those ambulances were here when I got here, uh, and they just, ambulances live hard lives.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that. I was just wondering the condition, you told me the condition, you were, you just stated the ones, but all the ones you stated aren't basically being used as frontliners.
Yeah.
So I'm wanting to know exactly what we're replacing these four with. You know what I mean? That at a million dollars, what are we replacing, replacing those four with? If, is it the ones that we're not using? Or is it frontliners? Because you didn't give me any mileage on frontliners or, or any conditions of them or anything. So, um, I, that's what I need right now.
Yes, sir. So I can give you a breakdown of the cost for all of our frontline units. They're all operational. They all have mechanical issues right now, but, but we're able to manage those right now. The big concern that we have is the trucks that are just sitting idle, not being used because it's just too expensive to keep them on the road. And those are all the ambulances that I've listed right there.
So what, what four, these four are going to replace what?
Uh, these four would replace the, uh, two hundred and fifteen, I'm sorry, the two hundred and nineteen thousand miles that's out of service. That would require a new engine in that. It would replace the diesel at a hundred and ninety-six. It's just too expensive on a, of an ambulance to keep up and running. And the last would be, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty mile, and that is a gas. That is operational right now, but once again, the cost to keep that ambulance operational is going to increase with time.
So, so, oh. So we're replacing all the ones that aren't being used like that is what you're saying, correctly, right?
With the exception of one. Yes, one is still being used, but it's going to be expensive.
But it's not being used as a frontliner. None of these are replacing, are used as frontliners.
No, sir.
So that's, that's, I mean, that's a lot of money to be spent on, you know what I mean? In my opinion, that I don't know, these AR, these, um, funds could be going somewhere else that might be needed just as much.
Commissioner Foster, if I can say, I, I think part of the concern is because the lead time for getting the new ambulances will be eighteen months to two years, that, you know, if, we've got high mileage ambulances now, so by the time they do get here, those frontlines will then revert back to backline. Um, but I, I think that the concern is we still have a lot of high mileage ambulances now and, uh, by going ahead and replacing, we're still eighteen months out before they can be up and into service. Is that?
That's correct.
Do you need recycling these ambulances too?
These ambulances that we purchased would go right to frontline units and then the older mileage ambulances would go into the backline fleet.
Mr. Cutterback?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we're not also looking at adding another, uh, ambulance at Madison Avenue?
Yes, sir. But that would, we wouldn't be purchasing an ambulance just for that sole purpose. That would be coming out of the fleet.
I understand, but, but, but it's got to come from somewhere.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I mean, one of your backups for, for something.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and what plays into that is our issue on base.
That's correct.
And then you also said you have an ambulance you're waiting on now?
We're waiting on two ambulances right now. We're waiting on one from two years ago and one from last budget year.
So that, that'd end up being six total?
Uh, well, four plus two, yes, sir.
I said, I mean, I, I understand things are needed, but I also know things are needed in other places, um, also. And, and a lot of times when, when things are needed in other places, we come up short on money. Um, you know, just my opinion, I, I think replacing two would be a better option than replacing all four at a million dollars. And, you know, but that's the pleasure of the board to do what y'all want to do. I can't agree with this right now at this time personally because of the price and whether it's actually really, really needed at this time and, you know, could these funds go somewhere else? That's something that we need to think about as a board. Uh, it's a lot of issues around the county, a lot of issues around the city, and even though we don't, um, we're not, city goes where has their own issues, but as taxpayers, our taxpayers still pay county, county taxes and we still have issues within the city that need to be taken care of as well. So I just don't, uh, like I said, I think getting to the two we have already coming in would be four, you know, so, but that's a lot of money.
Dave, what is the cost saving? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
What is the cost savings that we're looking for saving, you know, uh, by going ahead and doing this? Do you have a figure? Do you know what, what it would be for these?
So the return on purchasing new ambulances over a period of time, I could get that to you, but it's, these ambulances change from day to day. I mean, literally today, I can walk out of this meeting and they can say our frontline unit needs a new engine replacement. Uh, you know, Alex Westbrook is our-
No, I'm talking about purchasing the new ones.
The cost. Yes, the savings by go ahead, the increase that would happen if we go by, uh, June fifteenth.
So cost, I've seen a three, and three increases on ambulances in thirty days. We anticipate, we've been told by our ambulance companies that they anticipate an eleven to fourteen percent increase in the next month. So it's, it's a great question. It is the ultimate moving target. I've never seen anything like this, but in thirty days, we saw three increases on ambulance costs.
So that's a hundred and forty thousand more dollars.
Yeah. And they've advised that we can expect an eleven to fourteen percent increase this, in this month.
So the, the ones that we're buying, the two that we've ordered, just not got here yet, we've had on order, uh-
And they're, they're remounts, not correct?
Yes, sir, they're remounts.
They're remounts. We're using the old boxes, just getting new chassis.
So the sec, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry. The second remount was supposed to be a initial build ambulance. It was supposed to be a complete build. We budgeted the money for a complete build and in that period of time, the price increased outside of what we had budgeted. So we had to go back to another remount ambulance. But our game plan was remount, new ambulance, remount, and to get onto that cycle. But yeah, so our second ambulance was supposed to be an initial build and, and just the increase went out of our budget range, so we went to another remount.
So the, the, um, the new ones that you're proposing that we purchase are going to come with the stretchers?
Yes, sir.
That, that are kind of alleviating some of our workers' comp issues that we have where it's lifting and dropping?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is the, uh, the proposal we have in front of us, uh, they are gas engines, correct?
Yes, sir. They're all gas.
Oh, and they are, um, are they pretty much comparable to what we're running?
Uh, these are F four-fifties instead of the E four-fifties that we've been purchasing.
So the F four-fifty is going to be a heavier duty truck?
Heavy duty truck. It's a, uh, truck body instead of the van body and there's a huge safety increase for the staff as well.
Right, because it's going to have more of a, right. Um, Mr.?
Okay, any more discussion?
I just have one last question. Uh, what were the two units that we've already purchased? How much were those?
I want to say the first one was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, but that's, that's two-year, two-year-old knowledge, but I can get you that exact answer.
That's a remount?
That was a remount, yes, sir.
That few, uh, existed by new truck chassis?
Yes, sir, that's it.
But these trucks that we're getting, total new trucks, right?
Brand new trucks.
I when, because you're saying this big price increase, I I just need to see that difference also. I just to for something to be jumping eleven percent in thirty days is a little ridiculous to me. But so that's why I wanted to see the price that we were paying, we paid two years ago. But if it's not, they're not total branding trucks, that wouldn't even be comparable technically. So I just, you know, like I said, once again, I just think it's a little overkill in the price. Think it's overkill in what we need right now. But, you know, a million dollars of funds that also could be used, you know, half a million of that could be used for something else. But like I said, I'm just one vote, so that's just my opinion.
One more question, Dave. Skip me.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on just a second.
What is your average calls a day? How many? I mean, do you have?
This weekend broke new records. So this weekend, we we haven't seen a call volume like this in a long time. One ambulance ran twenty calls this weekend.
In a twenty four hour period?
Yes, sir.
What did you do to that special event?
No, we had an ambulance that was standing by at the special event. They did respond out there, but that was their district. Okay. Yeah, twenty calls.
All right. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, this question is actually for finance and, you know, in regard to our A R P. How much have we allocated that we we've already used and what is left?
So we have, we allocated an amount to match the broadband grants, but I don't have the info. We don't have those applications. I don't think they've been accepted or rejected yet. I think we're still waiting to hear.
We are.
So I I don't know how much is going to end up being allocated for those at this point. So pretty much, I'm trying to think if there's been any details.
Jet port, jet port.
The jet port was up to ten thousand, I think. I would I would have to get some more information. It's going to be hard. It's going to be difficult to give you an exact figure just because I don't know the status of the broadband grants yet. I think they were doing this early this month.
That and Commissioner Williams, we also during our budget workshops are going to be talking about the use of some of these dollars. So at at this point, it's kind of in flux. So but we will be bringing it up in our budget workshop next week.
Mr. Chair, well, you know, I I kind of I kind of agree, you know, like Commissioner Foster stated, you know, there are a lot of needs. There are a lot of needs in the city of Goldsboro as well. So I want to make sure that, you know, we allocate this money where it's going to it's going to get more bang for its buck all through the county. So, you know, we got to keep all that in mind. I think, you know, that's something that this board, you know, should just keep in mind and keep make sure everyone has the opportunity to see some of this funding. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I agree. Thank you so much. Commissioner Acock.
One one thing here I would like to emphasize here, when my husband took sick, I lived less than a mile from the facility, EMS facility. We had about a thirty five minute wait because the ambulance was out on call. And that was, that's kind of scary, you know, you waiting for an ambulance, you know, to come in because I, you know, they just didn't get there, you know. And I was just a mile from there and I called Dave, you know, and he helped me out with that. But there's a need there. Our population is increasing. We got extra homes being built. I think we got, what, fifty six that's coming in our area in one section. I mean, there's there's just need and I know the cost is prohibitive to a lot, but but when you need a call, you hope that person comes and the ambulance is working. I'd hate to be on the way to the hospital and the ambulance broke down.
Yeah, to answer your question, yesterday we were down to one ambulance at at one time.
But, excuse me, but this is, that's not going to change though, these four ambulances.
That's correct.
So you're still going to end up with the same thing. So I understand what everybody is saying and I agree, but it's not going to change that. Because you're still going to have one at this place, one at that place.
That's correct.
Or whatever, and so many on backup. So that's not going to change that. You're still going to be in the same situation when it comes to calls. So it doesn't, you know, I'm just talking right now at this point, a natural piece of it, you know. And those funds are for certain things. And I know there are needs in my community as well and in other communities. So that's that's the main thing, to making sure this money is spread it around because that's what it was sent here for. It wasn't sent here for just one basic thing or this or that. If you look at the qualifications for the money to be how it's supposed to be spent, it's, you know, to be spent in a lot of different areas. So that's my point where, like I said, that's just my opinion, how I feel about the situation and I'm only one vote.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes. I asked you a while ago about the stretcher, but it's it's got the actual, the infrastructure in the ambulance, but we already have the stretchers. Is that correct?
This is just the power load system, but we would already have the stretchers if this was approved. Yes, sir.
And to Commissioner Foster's point, you know, the A R P money is designed to help all of our citizens. And this is one service that affects everybody in Wayne County and the city of Goldsboro. So therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with finance, investigate the use of A R P funds to purchase the four ambulances.
Okay. Commissioner Acock.
Where's your highest call volume?
The high call volume is our three within the city limits of Goldsboro. So our number one is six on Madison Avenue. Our number two is right here on John Street and then our number five. And those three ambulances run forty eight percent of the calls of the entire service.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a roll call vote of approval.
Could you also add an appropriate budget amendment so that we can amend the A R P budget amendment and ordinance?
Same move.
Thank you.
All right, we added to the motion the budget of them.
Do we need to, I know when we discuss things when everyone is here, do we need to let the chairman and the vice chair vote last instead of first?
That will be fine.
Oh, doesn't that matter?
You leave us the last.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Acock?
Barb.
Barb, sorry. Commissioner Foster?
No.
Vice Chairman Acock?
Yes.
Chairman Daughery?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
And next is a presentation on the budget.
Well, maybe we need to take a long recess before this starts. No, I'm just joking. Let me first start by saying this budget is a little bit different from last year's budget. If you remember last year's budget, we really focused on capital projects. We had a four and a half cent tax increase because it was really to pay for the debt service.
Do I need this?
Not not at this point. Yeah.
Not yet.
Not. Next week.
Next week we'll need.
Next week you will greatly. But last year, we really focused on capital projects. We focused on Fremont Elementary. We focused on this new building out at the community college. We focused on a new jail. We focused on a new C O B, which is D S S and Health. So when we looked at it, we said there was fifty eight million dollars worth of new debt that we needed. To pay for that new debt, we needed to add four and a half cents for that debt service. What we did not do is address operations and this budget addresses operations. And it really addresses salaries. And you've probably seen this as much as I have, Johnson County went up forty two percent just on the EMS salaries. Sheriff's departments going up, oh, D S S, Health, everybody is going up on salaries. We have not done salary adjustments across the board in years. I know since I've been here, since I've been here, we have looked at individual departments. We've made some salary adjustments, but in order us to stay competitive and in order us to make sure that we keep the best people here in Wayne County, we have to address salaries and and that is the the kind of the crux of what this budget is about is dealing with salaries and dealing with operations. Again, Wayne County has not had a tax increase to look at operations. We have, again, last year's tax increase was for debt service for those capital projects. This is for operations and and again, we are going to recommend as a county manager's budget, a three cent tax increase. Again, with the majority of that going to salaries that we're looking at. So we'll go ahead and and start with the process. Again, let me say this is managers recommended budget and once I give you the budget, it is yours. So that that we will have workshops, we will have changes, we'll have additions, we'll have subtractions. But what this is, is going through, working with our department heads, working with our budget team. This is the best recommendation that we feel like we can give you in order to move Wayne County forward. Again, this is staff's recommended and managers recommended budget. But again, it is your budget ultimately. You're the ones that will set the tax rate. You're the ones that will prove the expenditures. You're the ones that will do what will set the parameters of what we'll do next year. So I just wanted to let you be aware of that. Again, that's kind of just what I said. We haven't looked at operations and I think in in Chip cranked me over a ten year timeframe. We're actually about a dime less on operations than we were ten years ago. But if you add back where we're at on the the debt service, we're a little over. But but we're about ten cent less than we were a year ago through some tax decreases.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Could you go back to that slide, please? The fifty eight million dollars worth of new debt, is that how much we pay a year or is that spread out?
No, ma'am. That that is the total capital projects. That was twenty five million dollars for D S S Health. That was twenty five million dollars for the jail. That was five million dollars for Fremont Elementary and three million dollars for the community college. So we have not gone out for that debt yet because those projects have not been bid.
Yeah.
Once they are bid, we'll go to the L G C and then we'll know exactly how much we need to borrow. But the thought process, this was a really a planning process. We wanted to make sure that we had the debt covered because we knew that there was no way we could have taken away fifty eight million dollars worth of debt from our current operations. So that's the reason why we raised taxes last year. Does that make sense?
Oh, well, it doesn't, it don't. I guess I'm looking at like what kind of yearly payments with this kind of debt cost the county?
We're looking, what we figured out and what we were were told last year is about one penny is nine hundred and twenty three.
Davenport will actually be reviewing all that this afternoon. They're going to do an updated presentation because of the interest rate environment and and the changes that we're seeing. So they're going to do an updated presentation today.
Right.
You just hit on something. Just a year or so ago, a penny was eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now it's nine hundred and something.
It's caught up, yes, sir. Yeah, and and it's caught up through new construction and growth. So and that's a good thing.
But yet our our census count is down.
Yeah.
Isn't that amazing?
Okay, but again, we've not had an increase to look at operations. And and again, this increase is just really looking specifically at operations.
What I look at is the increases is the figure you just quoted from eight hundred and eighty to nine hundred and something. That far as I'm concerned, that's a that's an increase.
Well, that's growth.
That's increase in in rest of the world.
I know, I know. But what I'm saying is take that and put it on salaries.
We have, and then I I need that and then some if we're to to make the adjustments across the board that we need to make. And again, even making the the adjustments per department across the board, we're not even getting where we need to be. If we were to do.
So that's nine sixteen per penny. What was it? What was it before eight what?
Eight eighty.
Eight eighty. So you can talk it over to thirty six thousand.
Okay. But but again, and I'll show you the increases.
And and you are going to talk about the salary increases?
Right, and we're going to talk about salary increases. We're behind, we're we're behind with respect to all departments. We've made some adjustments, like we we adjusted the sheriff's department last year, January one. We put their full increase in. We have increased EMS over the last couple of years. But again, that goes back to the point, didn't know Johnson County was raising their EMS salaries forty two percent.
This is Wayne County. We don't have to take these that Johnson County has.
I totally agree, but they have cars that can drive to Johnson County.
It's likely, but everybody won't.
That's right.
If that's if that's their choice, I mean, I don't want to hold anybody back.
No, no.
That's their choice. I mean, God bless them.
Not holding them black, but I I'm making you aware of an issue that you have and that we need to address.
I mean, I I understand what you're saying and we got to recognize as a board that we were already behind before they even made them changes. And we knew that as a board then, we know that now and not saying that we can't compete with them. They have over two hundred thousand people there, twice the size of us. But still, as 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 it goes across the county, I want to make sure everybody's getting a fair wage, even competing with Wilson, competing with the North County, wherever it may be. We still want to be competitive. So if that's that is that we need to raise, then we need to do what's right. So we 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 treat our employees fair. We keep, you know what I'm saying, good employees so we're not switching out employees all the time. And then as soon as they get here, get a little experience, they leave or whatever. So, you know, we still got to consider the laws.
And and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Foster. One of the things in this, this is not even the full implementation of all the salary increases. We're we're, you know, for our larger departments, we've only taken partial and it's going to have to be stepped in to get us where we need to be. So so it's, you know, it it's a lot, but it 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 is something we have to address. It really is.
I agree that we've got to address, Mr. Chairman. I agree we've got to address it. But I'm a I'm a property owner. I'm getting tired of paying all the bills. We tried to get a score since sales tax passed and it it wouldn't pass. But as a property owner, and not as a commissioner, but as a property owner, I'm tired of looking to bill.
Well, I understand and and, you know, our sales tax is up and 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 a lot of our revenue is up. But again, if you look at it at across the board, where we're at on salaries, it is going to take it. But but again, in looking at it right now, we're looking at at using three point five million dollars from fund balance to balance the budget. And this will not affect our fund balance policy. This is the unassigned that we would use. And what I want us to remember about using fund balance to balance the budget is a bridge. It's a bridge to balance the budget because ninety nine point nine nine percent of the time, you underestimate revenue and you overestimate expenditures.
Let me hear that one more time because I've argued that for years.
Because we there there is that bridge there, but we're it's unsure. A budget is is kind, it's the best guestimation we can use. But we underestimate revenue, we overestimate expenditures. And but we want to make sure that we come back in good shape. I don't want to have to come back to you if I overestimate revenue and I don't hit those revenue figures. Oh, by the way, I'm eight million dollars in the hole on fund balance. I, you know, that's like saying you got to go to the house. So.
I want to expand on this a little bit because through the years, I've always wondered why you would use fund balance to balance a budget. And the explanation that was given to me is, one, we underestimated revenues to start off with to be conservative. And secondly, we overestimate our expenditures. We fully budget every single employee's position.
Yes.
And through the year, we do not, we do not hire fully staff. We're never fully staffed. And there's always lapped salaries.
Right.
And those lapped salaries amount to millions of dollars, which cover the the fund balance that you've used. So it's confusing, but after ten years, I'm beginning to grasp it.
Let me clarify myself too now. I preached for years that our employees are not getting paid enough. But this board, we're we're the one spending the money. Far as I'm concerned, but we might have been spending some of it in the wrong places and it should have been going to our employees the whole time. But I don't want the employees to think that I don't care about them because I do, because I preached it ever since I've been on this board, that they're not getting paid enough. But the money's got to come from somewhere and right now, it's coming from the property owners. Now, I know sales tax has gone up some, but you damn you do and damn you don't.
That's very true, Steve.
Okay, but I wanted I wanted to clarify that I'm 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 for the employees because they've been underpaid for years, ever since I've been on this board. And we kicked the can down the road and 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 it's caught up with us now.
Yeah.
Yes. That's the thing. Like you said, we kicked the can. Well, I haven't been here, but somebody kicked the can down the road.
There's two of us up here to kick the can.
And, you know, just last last meeting, you know, a lot of this board was thinking about doing a sixty dollar mandatory pay for EMS, you know what I'm saying? And was fine with it, which would have been hit for the taxpayers also, you know what I'm saying? So I look at raising salaries is a little more important than my idea than covering overcharges on insurance that insurance doesn't pay for. You know, so I I'm pretty sure, you know, most people taxes that three point five percent or whatever, whatever, whatever we're going to raise it, maybe around a sixty dollar mark, a little more. But that's just a burden that we have to bear to make sure we get on a level playing field and get to a, you know, twenty twenty two standard. You know, we're not living in nineteen eighty anymore. You know what I mean? The cost of everything is going up, you know what I mean? The cost of salaries need to go up as well. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this board is aware of that, you know, and aware of just the decision just from last week, you know, two weeks ago versus today. When we come to talk about money, it's an issue. when we come to talk about money, it's an issue, taxpayers and stuff.
And Commissioner Foster is exactly right. We've tried to address this all along, you know? We just addressed it with animal control and just addressed it with nine-one-one. And we made those adjustments now because we were slow in getting those positions filled. Because the board said, hey, these are dedicated and they're great employees, but they're necessary jobs and services that we provide. We have to have those people to fill those positions. So the board said that we're going to take and go ahead and implement that now because we're having issues. And that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to stave off issues that may happen later.
And, well, we just started addressing it the last couple of years or so. And I part the problem, we should have been addressing this long before. I mean, this is part of my problem. But this is, we've just started addressing it because we finally realized, you know, something's got to be done. But I'm part of the problem. I should have pushed for this to have happened sooner than the last couple of years.
And I'll say this, this is not really, this is, some departments like DSS and Health, it's going to be a multi-year implementation because it's so large. But in order to try and get everybody in, we're making a good college effort for them now, but there's going to have to be, you know, as part, like we did with EMS, it's just going to be a multi-year process. So.
It's full of good news, to be honest.
I am wonderful news. One of the things, and we just talked about ARP funding. We have identified a lot of projects that are on our CIP that we can use for ARP. There's seven point seven million that we've identified. Not to say that we can do all these projects now, but we're saying that if we need to put some money from our CIP and need to use some of the ARP funds, we can. So those are the projects we've identified. This is from the thirteen point four million, not the ten million dollars that is set aside for revenue replacement.
That is not in your budget, is that correct?
It is kind of set aside.
The ambulances are.
Yeah, yeah. It's on the capital and what we decide to do ARP and CIP, there'll be some minor adjustment on that.
Okay.
But again, we wanted to let you aware, we've, and Janice correctly meant from wrong, these are the projects on our CIP that we've identified that can be used for ARP funding. So, Janice is shaking, yes.
Yes.
She's on camera, you're on camera. All right.
Let me clarify it one more time. Those projects are already on our CIP. We've just identified we could fund them with ARP funds.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And also, if you remember back earlier this year, we set aside, I think it was back in January, we set aside ten million dollars from our fund balance for capital reserve. And part of that, what we're looking for is, you know, so it's not coming from unappropriated fund balance. This is appropriated fund balance for this purpose, is for capital reserve. And we're asking and recommending to use one point oh six two million from that reserve fund for those projects. We have boardroom audio replacement. We have some voting machines that we need to purchase. We have roofs on some county buildings, HVAC replacements that we talked about earlier. Timekeeping system is what the board has talked about in the past. That will be the first implementation of it. That's about a, that's fifty percent to start the process, but that will be our first year's cost. And then a Microsoft Exchange upgrade that I can have Ryan explain when we need to. But it's part of the IT and part of our computer system that we have to upgrade. We're into life and, is that a general?
That's fair statement.
It is the chairman's favorite word, into life.
That's his only statement.
For into life for technology. But we've identified, and that is, I think, been a smart thing the board has done, is when we had a good fund balance return, that we did set aside money specifically for capital. And so we can use, you know, recommended the use of that.
Commissioner, the first item right there, boardroom audio replacement. Right here is the first place that we did the board and back sacrifice. What we've got right now is working good enough. Ryan may not agree with me, but far as I'm concerned, you can take that one out.
Okay, well, we can do that in the workshops.
Mr. Foster and I just got one vote, I'm just expressing Wayne's opinion.
Right, no, no, now, this is not, this is recommended. We've got budget workshops that we will go through this line item by line item and make cuts and adds and subtracts whenever you, you know, so choose. This is just recommended, you know? This is not saying this is actually going to be in the final budget. Again, looking at our surrounding counties, this is updated for twenty-one, twenty-two. Not sure what they're planning to do this year. So we're not out of the ballpark even going three cent increase. So Wilson seventy-three, Johnson seventy-three, Lenore eighty-four and a half, Green seventy-eight point six, Duplin seventy-three point five, and Sampson eighty-two point five. So our surrounding counties, we're in the ballpark. Again, Wayne County's public schools increase. If you look at the formula that we have, and it was agreed upon by both boards, we looked at, it's a four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollar increase for operations. Again, this is less than what they asked for. It was one of those things, you know, in budgets, sometimes you have to make choices. And I felt like our employees, we had to be a priority in this budget. And I understand the school system and I appreciate what they do and the sacrifices they make, but felt like that also since we added six hundred thousand dollars to their budget, and that is for the school on base, for the new STEM school on base, that is for operations and maintenance and some of their personnel costs that the board has already committed to, you know, they're going to have a million dollar increase really in operations.
I thought that figure was five hundred thousand.
Five eighty, I rounded it up, so.
Okay.
But again, you know, still two million in small capital, you know, from the sales tax. And again, we would, we had a balance in our sales tax for small capital. We're kind of cleaning out that balance over the next couple of years. So that would be an increase of four hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that money was set aside for Northwest.
It was originally for Fremont.
Fremont, that's right. Fremont, Northwest, and Southern Wayne, that we had set aside. So we kind of had an agreement with the school system that we would increase that, clean that out, so.
I have to be careful what I say constantly. Choose my words, as my wife says. But I want to kind of focus in on this screen. Two million in small caps and four hundred and seven thousand. So that's two million, four hundred and seven thousand dollars allocated to repair these buildings. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Per year.
Per year. I've gotten several calls in regards to wanting to know why this commissioner didn't spend more money on repairing buildings. And my answer is that we have allocated the dollars over to the school system, but we don't determine how they spend those dollars. They choose where, which improvement projects, which school needs new floors or new roofs or whatever, they make those decisions. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We better move on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, it's not just salaries that are going up, it's insurance. Six percent is really not a bad year, and again, we're self-funded. So even at a six percent increase, and that's a benefit we offer with no plan changes, that's half a million dollars. The retirement contribution has gone up explicitly the last couple of years, over a million dollars. Again, four hundred and twelve thousand last year and six hundred and thirty thousand this year. So that's mandated, we ain't got a choice. So those are, you know, you've got, you know, almost one point five million dollars there in the last couple of years we got to really control over.
So the local government dictates that?
Yes, sir, it's the state, the state pressure.
The state is actually increasing the taxes.
On everybody, on everybody.
So they're not lowering taxes, they're increasing taxes, they're just doing it a different way.
Well, they're making, the retirement system should be self-funded, and they're making sure that it is self-funded and they don't have to dig into the general fund for the state. And I can understand that.
But what I'm getting at is that comes out of Wayne County?
That comes out of Wayne County, yes, sir.
That last, wait, back up here, man, wait a second here. In twenty-one, twenty-two, that's this year.
Yes, sir.
The retirement cost to the county.
Yes.
Increased by four hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
That was this year.
Yes, sir.
Now, next year, it's going up, it's costing us six hundred and thirty, is that correct?
Yes, an additional.
An additional six hundred.
Yes.
So that's a million forty-two, right? But basically, just in the insurance and the retirement, you're looking at one point one, one point one million dollars.
Well, and we went up six percent on insurance last year as well with, I think we did plan changes last year, didn't we? Or not?
So you're saying it basically has cost us more than a penny just in these two items right here?
Yes, sir.
In tax?
Yes, sir.
So three cent ain't enough? I miss. I'm telling you, it's just full of good news. Let's go to the next slide.
And here's sort of kind of our breakdown of salary increases and fringes. General fund, which includes the jet port, is one point four million. And again, we've not really looked at, and general fund departments that we haven't looked at, aging, veterans, inspections, planning, those type departments that are really a little smaller that we've not addressed. So, but we felt like we needed to address those this year. Solid waste, which is an enterprise fund that doesn't affect our general fund, is a hundred and eight thousand. EMS, EMS is a million dollars. And again, we have gone up about twenty percent over the past two years. But this is not even keeping us up with the Joneses. This is making a good college effort.
The Johnsons.
The Johnsons, yeah. This is making a good effort in telling our employees, we understand, we value you, we're doing the best we can. Health, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, you know, we've done some changes in health. We've increased salaries, you know, we did the five thousand dollar bonus that the board approved. We've done things to help, but we're still behind. But this is not even the full recommendation of the salary study. DSS as well, half a million dollar. We've done some increases for DSS over the years. I think especially the last couple of years, we did income maintenance for five thousand per employee. So we tried to make some targeted in DSS, but it's half a million dollars.
I do think it's important for them to know that this is just our share of the DSS increases. So it's actually the full amount would be a million.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, we, again, most DSS employees are fifty-five percent. So we'll get that increase back from the state. So again, it's a million dollar increase, but the county portion is about five hundred thousand. Thank you for mentioning that.
As we get into our budget workshops next week, are we going to have a breakdown of each one of these departments?
Yes, we will, yes, sir.
It'll show the increase and the percentages and so forth. Will they also show the salary studies?
Yes.
For us to look at as well?
Yes, sir. I do want to thank Ginger and Herb and Sarah for what they did as well. We did a lot of these, you know, once we got through the really big departments, we were able to do most of these internally. Again, so I want to thank y'all for your work that y'all did.
Well, when you're looking at a four million dollar increase in salary, which are recurring funds, and it's not one year, it's from now on, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions on this. So we look forward to having you at our budget workshop.
All right. But again, you know, I mentioned Johnson County's EMS went up forty-two percent. But we've gone up twenty percent in the past couple of years, and I really applaud what we've done. We have really gotten our EMS staff to a point where we are getting close to being fully funded. It's like Dave said earlier, he's had one station run twenty calls in a twenty-four hour period. That's a lot of calls. So, and.
Basically, that's no sleep in twenty-four hours.
That's no sleep, yes, sir. It is.
Also want to make them aware that this is the new positions that were recommended at the budget sessions, and fringes have been figured, so this is the total cost.
The new position, and thank you, I appreciate that. The new positions we are recommending. One is solid waste, equipment operator, truck driver. That was a position that was in the budget, out of the budget, in the budget. So, but we wanted to make sure that that was a budgeted position. EMS is six positions. Originally, we had a request for eighteen. But working with Dave, again, we're trying to take as a good bite of the apple, but we can't bite the whole apple.
But that was going back to a different type of schedule.
Yeah, it was going to a different schedule as well, and.
I don't want it to sound like he asked for eighteen and did seven on six. I mean, that was going to a whole different schedule altogether.
And that was from our request, we had requested to look at a different schedule.
Right. But it, you know, again, we're trying to take, again, a good bite of the apple, but it ain't the whole apple. Environmental health specialists, and working with Brenda, our environmental health specialists are basically being overworked because of the number of separate permits that we're getting, and we don't want to get behind with respect to issuing permits. The dentist and hygienist that we want to hire in health, we have revenue that is set aside that will cover those two positions. We want to hire a dentist full-time and a hygienist full-time and really use the asset that we have of the mobile dentist unit that has not been used really in the past four or five, and a lot has to do with COVID. But we really feel like that that's a service, but it also can be a revenue generator as well. And then jet port administrative assistant, one. The jet port has got to the point where they really do need a position out there. We put a lot of responsibility on Tina West. Tina does an incredible job for us, but it's very difficult for her to handle jet port and handle EMS, no, she doesn't do EMS, emergency management, nine-one-one, what else am I missing, Chuck?
Fire marshal.
And fire marshal, so. So we felt like that there needed to be a person, an administrative person at the jet port.
Now, my understanding was it was two halves to make a whole?
Yes.
In other words, there was a half a position?
There was a half position, yes, sir, there was a half position at the jet port that we're making a whole, yes.
So it was determined, well, let's make it a whole, have that person at the jet port, but actually doing some other duties at the jet?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, one of the things that we're doing, if you see an increase to the Maxwell, oh, I missed the Maxwell Center discussion, the venue services team member, we're having difficulties finding part-time help with setups. Nobody wants to do part-time help, and we need somebody to help on a full-time basis for those setups, because we're getting more and more and more busy at the Maxwell Center. So that's what that is for. But what we've basically done with that is taken the part-time salaries that we had set aside for that setup and moving it into full-time, but it is creating a position. And then, one housekeeping position, we were going to change that from Kindles and facilities and move that up to the Maxwell Center. The reason for that, the Maxwell Center is really more than just an eight-to-five job, there's going to be some times, and we needed to, the pay is a little bit more, but we need that position to be a little bit more flexible to work with the events that we have out at the Maxwell Center. So those are the new positions. And again, major expenditure changes, increased sales tax for statutory requirement for schools, you know, with our sales tax increasing, we got a million five increase for capital. We have set aside a hundred thousand in fuel contingency, and everybody's seen gas rise, that may not be enough, but we're, we felt like we needed to set some funds aside for fuel contingency. Again, there's an increase for security, and we, you know, approved this at a couple of meetings ago, but we felt like we had to upgrade our security here, and also upgrade the security at the Borden Building, and also for DSS and Health. Again, professional services have increased, one point three million dollars is for Veritas, that is for child support. But salaries decreased in DSS by one point two, so it's a net of about a hundred, so, you know, that's our guesstimation at this point.
So this cost us a hundred thousand dollars to contract that part of it out?
At this point, yes, sir. And again, that's our guesstimation, and until we see exactly what's being billed and what's not being billed, that's what we...
Well, that's what we said, but we figured two to quarter to two-fifty, I think is what we said at the meeting.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but...
We thought it was going to be a hundred, but we kind of, just in case, because you always got variables. Thank you.
There's four hundred thousand in shredding for DSS, they've got a lot, a lot of records that we need to address. Kim made a very good presentation at the budget workshop. And then, health and dealing with a lot with the state and COVID, and there's just a lot of different things in the health that we can go in specifically during the budget workshops. Again, we increased Wayne Community College transfer by five percent for their general operating. They asked for a ten percent increase or about a nine point eight percent increase, but just felt like we could only afford at this point a five percent increase. However, we have set aside six hundred thousand dollars over the next four years, and that will be for the backfield for their career tech building. You know, as you're aware, we're working with them, they're building a career tech building, new building on campus. Once they do their, they move out of their existing space into the new building, they think there's going to be about two point four million dollars worth of renovations to fix those buildings on the backfield. So we've set aside cash, so we don't have to dip into fund balance over the next four years to kind of save for that, that cost.
Just kind of like a savings account?
Yes, sir.
I got to go back to the seven hundred thousand dollars in health under professional services. You're going to break that out for us?
We will break, we will break that out, and when we were adding it up yesterday, we just noticed that that was a large, but we didn't have the breakdown, but we'll break it, we'll break it down.
Did you get that seven fifty, Dave?
So, again, all volunteer fire departments, tax rates will remain the same, we did not get a request for increases this year.
Well, I can tell you that the rumble is coming.
Yeah.
I've had several calls, so...
Next steps, copies of the proposed budget will be filed to clerk's office today for the public to review. You know, in our agenda, we did approve, under consent, setting the public hearing for June seventh, and we need to have the budget adopted by June thirtieth to be statutory. Work schedule, you know, there's going to be a lot of work that's put into this. Work sessions will be scheduled at your convenience and at your need.
Batteries? Batteries is going to get crazy.
Let me, can we talk about that right now in regards to scheduling our work sessions?
I know we have one tentatively scheduled for Monday.
You've got one for Monday and Tuesday.
If we could delay the one Monday, I have a funeral that I need to go to, so...
Tuesday and Wednesday? Tuesday and Wednesday if necessary, can we go that route?
No idea Tuesday, I don't know about Wednesday, I have to look at my calendar at home, I ain't got it with me.
Well, we just need to wrap it up Tuesday.
Half of Tuesday, so...
Do what now?
I will not be here for at least half of Tuesday.
Well, we got to have you here.
Yeah.
Which half of Tuesday?
Like ten to two, right in the middle of the day.
Really?
Yes, sir.
We could do Tuesday afternoon if you want, and then, you know...
Well, we got Memorial Day weekend coming up here, I just, just want y'all to bring that to your attention.
Right.
And we've got it scheduled now on the seventh for our public hearing.
Right.
So we need to wrap up our budget here.
Let's see what's going to rain, how about that?
All right, what about Wednesday?
Ain't raining Wednesday, it's raining Monday and Tuesday. That works, I mean, I'm just telling you, unless we're going to do a lot of that.
Well, I can't do it Monday, I reckon we can come in here at two o'clock on Tuesday and get some work done.
Right.
We'll eat dinner.
Do what now?
We can eat dinner, I reckon.
Well, we could.
What's your weather say on Thursday?
It's dry and hot.
I know. What about...
It don't go there further than that.
Let's, let's, let me propose that we come on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth at two o'clock. We'll plan on sandwiches in the evening, and we'll, we'll stay and work until seven, seven-thirty or so.
We need to recess that, we can then, you know, go to another date.
Go to another date if necessary.
Yeah, we can recess, is that right, boy? We can recess, you know, if we do need another date, we can recess that meeting so we don't have to re-advertise us.
And I would want people to kind of leave open sometime on Wednesday. I mean, the rest of the week's going to be dry, so...
And Joe, Tuesday, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday from two to three, I have an appointment that I can't guess.
Two to three. So leave open Wednesday, Wednesday morning for us to call back if necessary. No, we're not going to spend the night. Is everybody kind of tentatively okay with that?
I look at mine when I get home, and I can probably shuffle some stuff around, but...
Well, I got, I got a dental...
Unless it's a doctor's appointment, but I've already rescheduled one, one time.
I got a dentist appointment on Wednesday morning, but I'm rescheduling that. I always like to reschedule dental appointments anyway, give me excuse. So at any rate, so the twenty-fourth, two o'clock until, and then we're leaving Wednesday morning open.
Right, and we'll, we'll recess that Tuesday night, and then we'll go from there.
Is that good with everyone? Commissioner Williams, did you hear all that?
I did.
Okay, good. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
I will send out the presentation to the board, so you can have that in front of you, I'll email that to you after this meeting. So, but we're, I'm also finalizing the budget message, and we should have that out tomorrow, is what I'm hoping.
Bevan still works, you didn't ask him.
So...
Do what now?
Bevan still works, you didn't ask him.
I didn't hear anything, Commissioner Foster, I did not hear anything from you.
I'm fine.
You're okay?
Yeah, all right.
I didn't ask you, Barbara.
I said okay.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
But again, I do want to thank the budget team, Chip, Ann, Janice, Allison, who am I missing, Ryan, and who, nope, and Noel. That was kind of the core of the managers team. We had really good meetings at the Maxwell Center where we had budget presentations, appreciated those board members that showed up as well to hear those presentations. A tax increase ain't fun, it is not fun. Again, especially on the heels of another tax increase from last year. But again, I want us to focus, last year is debt service for capital projects that we had to do, it was not for operations. And this is for operations, really to get us not even to the level we need to be, but again, to take that good bite out of that apple.
You don't have to convince us, we've got to convince the taxpayers.
Well, I'll say this right here, you know, as leaders of the county, we're charged to provide certain services, not just for the county, but for the city. You know, all, I mean, all county and city residents, you can or will or have used the EMS system, DSS and health, some of them unfortunately used the jail. I mean, we got things that we, and I've said this more than one occasion, I mean, I don't really want to be known as a training center. You know, I think we should have the best of the best, the best that we can afford, but if you're having a heart attack, you don't want somebody just got out of school, I mean, you want the best of the best. If you got somebody, if you've got somebody, you're held hostage by somebody, you want the best of the best to come to get you, to come help you, you know, and we've got services that we've got to provide, and I guess the county citizens have got to, you know, determine if they want us to keep providing those services. I mean, it's not, this is very stressful being up here, because I'm, as Wayne said, I'm taxpayer as well, I mean, and it costs me, every time we go up, it costs me a lot of money, and I don't like to pay taxes any more than anybody else does. But there again, you know, we're charged to provide the services, and that's a hard decision we got to make.
And I'm not complaining because I'm a taxpayer, because I'm very blessed, a lot of people are not as blessed as I am, and some of them, you know, at some point in my life, younger, when I first got married, I had to struggle, but I've been very blessed, but there's so many people out there that they're struggling.
Well, again, Tuesday, the older I get, the more I see a return of things that you thought you'd never see again. This country is facing an unbelievable economic storm. And that storm, wherever it came from, is pushing inflation to untold numbers. What people don't recognize is, yes, when you go to the gas station, your gas has more than doubled, but it also has doubled in operations of county government. When you go to the grocery store and all of a sudden, that food, you walk out of that with a shopping cart and you said, how could I spend two hundred dollars? And your cost of food has gone up by twenty-some-odd percent, I don't know where they come up with the eight percent, but anyway, our food cost goes up as well. So our costs are going up just as much as individuals, and people don't recognize that. And certainly, we don't want to add insult to injury with you faced with all those economic problems and challenges, but we're facing them as well. So this board is having some tough choices. We're up to it, we're going to sit down, we're going to go through the book, we're going to find some way to make it as easy a transition as we can. We appreciate you having the fortitude to come and recommend an increase like that, but let's roll our sleeves up, and let's see where we can go in and minimize the pain.
I got one thing.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Foster.
You know, I've listened to what everybody said, you know, I understand and agree with some of it, but I, you know, the citizens of Wayne County have to understand that, you know, if you look at a lot of surrounding counties, they're paying more taxes in surrounding counties than what we're paying here. And I understand years ago that commissioners made a choice to not raise taxes, and that was great, but you also have to understand what position that put us in now at this point. And to move forward, sometimes, you know, everybody has to suffer a little bit in the long run to move forward and get ahead. A year ago, we had the decision of raising taxes a certain amount to kind of sort of get on a better level playing field, but we didn't, we chose a lower route, a lower rate, and that kind of sort of put us in a position now where we having to go back and do that again. I don't like that of it, because I would have rather just did it at one time, and, you know, everybody take that blow, you know, I never get a call from my mom about anything political, but I got a call that day, you know what I'm saying, and I had to understand, you know, explain that to her, you know what I'm saying, and then, you know, and I think that if we're going to move forward on anything, we need to lay it out so the citizens of Wayne County understand exactly what we're up against, you know, the reason why, so there'll be more understanding before we just hit them with a tax bill, because I know we're going to get a lot of pushback on it. Something that's, you know, at the end of the day, you know, either we're going to sink or we're going to swim. That's just life.
I asked Noel, going back to the fuel cost, I asked Noel to run some numbers last week, and it's projected that we're going to be somewhere about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more in fuel cost this year than last year, and it would be more than that if the sheriff and EMS hadn't implemented trying to stage people instead of, you know, doing a lot, so. I guess, you know, I can look, and I can look at the actual numbers on it, I can tell when they pretty much done that, because we dropped about fourteen thousand dollars in one month, actually fifteen thousand, last fourteen thousand, so...
You got any words of wisdom for us, Commissioner Horace?
I agree with Commissioner Foster, you know, I was the one who made a recommendation for a tax increase two years ago, I stand by that decision, maybe we should have raised it more than we did. However, we're still balancing our budget on the bikes of the taxpayers, and that's what, forty percent of property owners here. We've got farmers right now who basically are facing a crisis with fuel, fertilizer, and so on and so forth. Those grocery prices you were talking about, the farmers aren't seeing that.
Agreed.
You know, so, and being a real rural community, I just have to bite my tongue, basically. I know it has to be done, but how do we go about doing it proudly? That's my only point.
Well, you've just left us in a very somber mood. Well, you've just left us in a very somber mood. Any comments, Commissioner Williams?
Yes, I want to remind people that some of us, not only do we pay county taxes and cities' taxes, we pay special district taxes as well. And unfortunately, it's a necessary evil at some point to raise taxes. I want to remind the board that what we didn't see in the budget was, at our retreat, we had some top priorities, and we didn't see the digital library, anything possibly allocated for that, or Brogdon Middle School, because that was one of the schools, I know we're going to be talking about schools later in the city from the NAACP, but Brogdon Middle School is in bad shape, and that's one of the next schools that the board did the study on. So I just want to keep that fresh in everyone's mind as well. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barbara Acock, any comment?
Yes, sir.
That's what I should, that's what I should have said earlier, no comment. Mr. Acock.
I've already said too much.
All right. With that said, we are now going to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to read a letter and to you, and this is a very bittersweet day for me. To the commissioners and staff, from me, wanted to let you know I will be resigning as Wayne County manager. Wayne County Board of Commissioners and Staff, it is with great appreciation and thankfulness to you and to this community that I must submit my resignation to you as county manager of Wayne County. I have been asked and have accepted to serve as the next assistant manager for the city of Burlington. And my last day here in Wayne County will be June 30th. Wayne County has been an incredible opportunity for me, and I appreciate this board, former county manager George Wood, and the original board of commissioners that hired me, that's Chairman Bill Acock, Vice Chairman Joe Gurley, and Commissioners Bell, Daughtry, Mayo, Cromarty, and Acock. And they allowed me to work for this great community. Being born in Clinton, raised in Warsaw, and seeing my first movie at the downtown Paramount, at the Paramount in downtown Goldsboro, I fully feel that my life and career have come full circle. I am very proud of the work that we have done during my five years here, and I do believe that much has been accomplished. From the start of the new DSS health in jail facilities, the Joe Gurley Emergency Operations Center, the John Bell Probation, the EMS substations, the new ways to do economic development, and the opening of the Maxwell Center, we have done a lot on our plate, and a lot has been cleaned off. I am also very thankful for your support of this staff, and it is truly one of the best staffs that I have ever worked for in my 29-year career. This community has a lot to be proud of. Through civil unrest, Hurricane Florence, the loss of three sitting commissioners, and COVID that we've faced in the past five years, we have seen more in local, in the last five years than most local governments will ever see in a lifetime. Burlington offers me an opportunity to finish my career in an area that I want to retire. One of my goals for retirement is to teach local government, as I did previously as an adjunct professor for Elon University, UNC Chapel Hill, and Alamance Community College. I enjoy talking with students to show them that government is not so bad, that actually good things can happen if you work together, and know that compromise is not a bad word, and that we look for what is best for all citizens equally within our community. Thank you for your support of me during my time here, and I will truly miss the community and the people here. I believe that we have set up the community for great success for the future, and I am very proud to have been part of the team that has moved the needle forward in Wayne County. And I promise you, it was not the tax increase that, or any proposed tax increase, it was timing. It was just timing. It's timing.
Mr. Honeycutt, I received that call yesterday, and as did the other board members, and I was shocked to hear it. And as you read through your letter, it did bring back a good bit of memory. You have a great deal to be thankful for and be proud of, because over those five years, much has been accomplished. We've definitely moved the needle. We brought Wayne County almost out of asleep. And on behalf of the board, we appreciate your service. We do not look forward to having to make a choice of someone to fill your shoes, but we will begin that search. We wish you and your family the best. And so we begin our search. Any comments?
Mr. Honeycutt, I came on board maybe two and a half years ago, and I appreciate everything you did for me. We've had some open, honest discussions. We may not have agreed on everything, but we walked away as gentlemen, and I have a yield to your advice. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Foster?
I spoke with Craig yesterday, so we're good to go.
Good to go. Commissioner Williams?
It's very disappointing because I got an opportunity to connect and see a professionalism that I didn't experience in my other positions as an elected official. I got an opportunity to get open dialogue and open information, no backdoor meetings, and I learned a lot from you. And I, you know, I just, you know, I hope that, you know, your endeavors make you happy and, you know, and you bring that same professionalism to Burlington that you brought to us. Thank you.
Commissioner Barbara Acock?
Well, I can understand where Craig's coming from, being with his family. That's very important. He's always a gentleman, always with a smile on his face, which puts a smile on my face, and I thank you for that. You've been a good comrade, you know, working with on the board. And most of all, I hope you the best, and enjoy being with your wife every day. She might be running you back.
She's a lucky woman.
I know she is. But good luck. I really appreciate you.
Commissioner Gurley?
Well, Craig's about as easy to mess with as anybody I've ever.
Mess with? Ben, you do love to mess with folks, too.
I can get him going real easy, and that's going, I'm going to miss that, Craig. But, no, I mean, Craig is, we've always been able to talk plain English, you know, to each other, not really a boss-employee thing, more of a one-on-one, man-to-man type deal, and I appreciate that in a leader. We've always kidded it a whole lot, but I understand you've been away from your family for, you know, five days plus a week, sometimes in your situation with your mother-in-law has took a toll, and I know it's kind of like, you talk about a caregiver, sometimes a caregiver takes over than the patient does. In the same situation with your wife, you're taking a lot with you being gone. So I hope y'all, good luck. I know you'll do, you'll do well, and we'll miss you, but we still got your phone number unless you change it.
Commissioner Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've been on this board close to 10 years now, and there's been a lot of changes. The last three years, I don't know how you, I don't, with the COVID, no, it's been a challenge, challenge you probably never had in your career before. But it's been a challenge, and you've walked us through it. And, you know, there's been times that we had differences of opinion, but we always worked it out. But we probably could have got some more things accomplished if COVID hadn't hit, but I mean, but really, it's put a strain on everybody, but you've led us well during that. And I appreciate your service to Wayne County. Wish you all the best of luck. And the part about your wife being a lucky lady, we asked her about that, and we were good from there. She may be glad to have you back. Then again, Liz Barber says she may be trying to run you off. But thank you for what you've done for Wayne County.
Still want my cigar.
It's a tapa nugget now.
Tapa nugget.
But with inflation, that could be a $20 cigar.
But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's quite a mouthful. Okay, Board of Commissioner Committee reports.
Mr. Harrison is going to report.
Harrison, I'm going to rename you.
Most people do sooner or later.
Sooner or later. Commissioner Foster? No comments. Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, I want to remind everyone that the deadline is approaching for the summer employment program. It's the 20th, it's the last day to apply. You know, we need the adults to tell the young people they can make $1,200, $1,200 bucks. That's a lot of money for a few hours out of the summer of working. And they're going to get educated, they're going to get financial literacy, they're going to get the opportunity to work around great staff from the county. So we don't want them to miss that opportunity. They can go to Wayne Gov, they can fill out the application. It's very simple. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Barbara Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Craig and all of Allison and Janice and everyone for working on this budget. I know it's been a hard budget. Like Commissioner Acock, I've had a lot of calls about this, and I want us, when we do have our meetings, look and see if the items we have on these placements and codes and stuff, can we cut back somewhere? Because I live in a farming community, and there's a lot of farmers out there struggling, as well as regular people that don't farm. And it's a big hardship on them. And we talk about going to the grocery store, the cost of things and everything, but the cost is also going to be on them, too. We're going to lose a lot of farmers. And when we lose a lot of our farmers, because it's like Winston Churchill said, you can only tax so much. And we got to look at, maybe we need to be on a budget on some things. I was looking through some things here, and maybe there's a lot of line items we can cut out also. But like I said, you know, this year, last year we done four, this year we do three, and the following year we're going to have to do more, but we go ahead and get on a budget, too. And I know it's hard, but we got to think about our citizens and the hardships that they're going through, too. And I've had a lot of farmers come up to me and says, this year I probably will not be farming next year. So where are we going to get our food then, when we lose our farmers? We're already losing a lot of land because they can't afford to pay the taxes. So when we get into this budget, this is some of the things I want us to think of. What can we do without? Where can we make a sacrifice? We won't secure our employment, our employees, because we got to look out for them. But there's other things in here maybe we can look at, really get in depth on, in working on this budget. Maybe we don't need an extra chair, maybe we don't need an extra this. Those are things that we need to look at, and I'd like for the board to be very mindful that when they go through this budget. We might have to increase, but hopefully not 3%. But that's all I'm asking my board members to, let's look at, let's look at it very closely. What is our sacrifice that we're going to make? And that's what I want to be able to tell the people in my community when they come up to me, because they don't understand a lot of things, but they understand when the bill comes. And they're already suffering hardship. So let's just be thinking about this, going through the budget, very critical, what can we do without? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gurley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our TAC meeting last week, and this, in the next 30 to 60 days, you should be seeing these going up on all four-way stops, which would be Zion Church Road at 111, down in the Prostown community, Piper Princeton Hennett Road, just outside Piper, between there and the Hunter, Airport Road and Mount Comer Church Road, just between Belfast and Pygle, Indian Springs and northeast Church Road, and the Indian Springs, Mount Olive area. Also, if you've seen, this is what I was going to speak on the last meeting, but I stopped because we hadn't adopted it yet. If you see that big Dozer-type machine out on the bypass, putting in conduit, they're actually putting in broadband internet through a federal grant. I've got the contact information, I'm going to forward it to Chip, so he can contact and just see if there's anything that we might can piggyback off of. Don't know anymore else about it. Jennifer didn't know anything else about it. But that's something that we might can piggyback on, you know, off of that part. The Hiswalt Road realignment at 13 should be happy, or should start under construction next 45 days. Our section of the 70 bypass at Princeton section, Musgrave, Evergreen Cemetery, that part did not make the cut on the funding this last go-round, and pretty much that's all it's got to do with us. And there's one more thing that, two years ago, I lost some dear friends this week. One of them being Joe Gurley, and the other being Donald Gray. In a seven-day period, I lost two of the best, so right. Just keep their family in the prayers. I talked to Dana yesterday, but not before last, and she's still, she's lonely, and Sam as well, so just remember them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to report, I did attend the change of command out at the base, you know, very good ceremony. I think we've got a new base commander that's going to be easy to work with. Probably shouldn't say this, but you know, when you attend events out there, they play a big role in some departments of the county, but it seems like us as county officials and all, we kind of get left out sometimes. It's, you know, it's kind of just to sit in the audience and be classified as other elected officials, but that's just my opinion, so we'll move on from that. Also, we'd like to make sure that we keep our clerks' family in our prayers. Carol lost her mother day before yesterday, you know. Her mother had been in declining health, but nothing to what they thought it was, but just caught them all kind of off-guard. But again, let's keep Carol's family in our prayers. Also, let's keep Mr. Honeycutt's family in our prayers for the loss of their family. Also, let's keep, uh, Mr. Honeycutt's family in our prayers for the loss of their family. It's, uh, it's never easy. It, it gets better, but it never goes away. Also, pertaining to the budget, uh, we can get through this, we can work it out. Uh, we've got to look where we can, uh, some of the things that we, uh, feel like we won't, we got to look at cutting out and concentrating on what we need. As Commissioner Barbara Acock stated, you know, I was raised on a farm, still have farmland that we lease out. You know, every time that my expenses goes up, I have to pass it on to our, to my farmer that's renting the land from me. They're in a difficult position, uh, right now, situation. Uh, I was raised on a farm, me and my dad farmed till the early 70s. And, uh, I took a career change and we quit farming. But I look back now, I was buying fertilizer at $35 a ton. And this is probably, I don't know, over $1,000 a ton now. I was selling corn for $3 a bushel. They're selling it for $10 a bushel, but I was actually making more money at $3 a bushel than they are at $10 a bushel. I mean, it's not only the farmers that's in this predicament, our, our small businesses, I mean, it's, uh, they're just struggling. But we can look at this budget and, and we'll make it work. But this board is going to have to make some sacrifices also. Because our employees, as I said earlier, you know, we kicked his can down the road and I don't know. But we're going to make it work. We make it work. With the staff, uh, can give us some guidance, Mr. Honeycutt, Mr. Crumpler, Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, uh, we count on y'all to help us get through some of these difficult times and we know that y'all are well-qualified to help get us through this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Today I want to announce something that doesn't cost any money. I really am excited to announce this, a working group. There have been several concerns expressed over Wayne County and some of our municipalities and Wayne County of not being business-friendly, that we've got too much regulation, ordinances are out of date, uh, things are, that are impeding business or people being able to come in and invest in our community. So after reaching out and discussing this for some time now, I'm excited to announce the Wayne County Development Working Group. Now, the purpose of this group is to evaluate and review land use, ordinances, and processes to make Wayne County more business-friendly. There is a perception amongst the business and industrial communities that Wayne County is not business-friendly, and there are unnecessary rules and regulations and processes that make it difficult for development to occur in Wayne County. This group is to evaluate and make recommendations to either the county or to municipalities about common sense approaches to development that will benefit all of Wayne County. The group shall seek information from local developers and industry that will offer suggestions to working group on possible changes as well. The chairman of this working group shall be the county assistant manager. He is charged with setting the organizational meeting prior to June 30th and set the meeting dates going forward monthly or on a as-needed basis as determined by the chairman. The members of this group shall be from Wayne County, the assistant county manager, the planning director, the chief building inspector, and a WCDAs board member. The city of Goldsboro shall have the assistant county manager, the planning city manager, excuse me, the assistant city manager, the planning director, the city engineer, and a WCDAs board member. WCDAs will have the existing industry director. Mount Olive, Fremont, and Pyeville shall each have one appointee of either the mayor, the manager, or planning director. This group is basically to meet and do the hard task of reviewing our ordinances. And it, their objective is to make us more business-friendly, to streamline those ordinances. There are a lot of ordinances that get on the books and they just stay there. I was watching the city council meeting last night and there are in fact impediments to business owners being able to, uh, use their facilities. So not only with the city, and I'm not calling them out, I just happen to be watching that city council meeting all the time, uh, we have some of those same concerns as well and the other municipalities. So at any rate, this, um, hopefully will be, get off the ground after our budgets are done, Chip, uh, and you can call your organizational meeting. Any further comments? Being done, I entertain a motion to go into closed session. Go. No, I want to close it. Uh, and the purpose for the going into closed session?
Is to consider the conditions of appointment and initial employment of a public employee.
All right. So I have a motion.
So move.
All right, I have a motion. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Here or none, all those in favor, by roll call vote.
Chairman Daughtry.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Acock.
Yes.
Commissioner Acock.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Horace.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Before we go, has he got the thing set up for him for the, uh?
Yeah, he's setting it up.
All right, we're going into closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. And the purpose of our work session this afternoon is to have some discussion materials from our fine company Davenport. Come join us. Antonio, are you online?
He's gone, Mr. Chairman.
He is not, we'll have to, we're going to try to get him on WebEx, but he's not yet.
Can you, uh, hold off just a moment here for us to try to get him on WebEx?
You all right? Are you all right?
Oh, yeah. I've been out this whole life.
Our technology, sometimes it just doesn't quite work. So you see a fool, you need a nap, is the way you say it. We just need for him to save us about $5 million so we wouldn't give our employees a rent. Did you hear what he said?
I did.
Okay. Do you need to revisit your, your literature of weed?
We need to cut out.
How are you going to be there paying sidewalks?
I'm so gravelled in.
What is the current borrowing interest rate that you are seeing?
Orchidate engineer.
20-year financing.
I'm designing campus boards. Really? I figured it'd be higher than that.
We have North Carolina County, 20-year bonds for, not bad, but.
You need to put sidewalks.
They did a year.
A year, I guess. Let the. That does bad.
So we are absolutely.
The ads is what they want, just when you put sidewalks.
But we're still on a historical basis, pretty attractive, just not where we were six or 12 months.
And they're talking about another 50 basis points.
Another Fed move of 50, I think at their June meeting and, and, uh, some will say that's already sort of been accounted for in these rates. Hard to know exactly. Commonly believe that that's what happens, so the market tends to build that in.
Yeah, you're right. Or is Beagleback better? Careful now. Ah. Why should I be careful now, Joe? I never.
You guys are lying.
Wayne, the sad part about it, you still have people defending that. I mean, I just don't understand.
He's on.
He's off.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, sir.
Ah, I hear you. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Ready to go?
We are.
Well, good afternoon. Again, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. We serve as financial advisor to the county and have served in that role for a number of years. Um, we actually were here on May 18th of 21, so almost exactly a year to the day to present a very similar material, which is focused primarily on capital projects. I know y'all heard some preliminary information on your budget this morning. What we're going to talk through today is really about the capital side of the budget in FY '23 and beyond. There are several things in the book and the appendix that I'm not going to go through, but they're good reference materials if we need to go through it or, or, um, dig into any detail. So what I'm going to be covering is the front section of this book. There are page numbers in the lower right corner, and please stop me if there are any questions along the way. I'm going to be moving the slides here as I go. So that is, uh, our contents, again, all the appendices, A, B, C, D, E, and F. You can go through there and look at individual details on debt, on your capital improvement program, uh, rating reports, your policies, and the school funding agreement. What we're going to cover today on page three, start with a, and I think most all of you were part of this a year ago, so some of this will look very familiar to you. Just give a, a brief overview of the county's credit ratings and some peer comparisons that we'll use in a few, in a, in a few different slides. Talk a little bit about fund balance, your existing debt profile, and then we'll get into the CIP, um, Capital Improvement Plan Funding Approach. So we'll start with the ratings on page five. On the left-hand side, you'll see that Wayne County is rated AA2 by Moody's Investor Service and a AA by Standard and Poor's. Both of them rated you officially and published a report on you back in 2017 when we went to the bond market. Moody's also published an interim report in the fall of '21, but they do look at you each year. They may not publish something each year, but they're looking at audits and budgets. So what you'll see is you are what we call two notches away from the highest rating any local government can achieve being AAA. And, you know, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the prospects for improving the bond rating. I think that is a, is a possibility. It may not be a near-term, um, um, adjustment, but I think over time, as you're moving forward, I think there are absolutely, should be opportunities, uh, to improve that rating. On the comparison, on the right-hand side, we subscribe to a database that Moody's maintains. And so we're going to compare you, um, in a few slides to some counties nationally. AA1, so that's the rating right above you. Moody's rates 123 counties across the country. That's credits, 123 counties, that's AA1. AA2, which is your rating, there are 221 counties across the country at that level. So you're one of that 221. And then the rating category below you, there's 160. A little more relevant are the North Carolina counties in those rating categories. So AA1, there's 14 counties, you can see who they are. AA2, one of which is you all, 21 counties. And then the rating category right below you, there's 10. So that's kind of the universe of the peers, your rating level as well as the rating category above and below. Okay?
So does it tell you how far we are from AA1 and AA+? Does it?
It, it, I, I'll give you a little bit of insights on that in, in these next couple of slides. And so what you've got here is the, the methodology that the rating agencies use to rate local governments, counties, cities, towns. And on the left-hand side is Moody's. They basically have four areas of focus. The economy and tax base, which is 30% of the rating. So they're looking at your total tax base, your tax base per capita, and certain wealth levels. That's 30% of the rating. And the reality is you all as a board don't have a tremendous amount of near-term control to change the tax base or to change the wealth levels. It's a longer-term effort to create a county where people want to come and invest and create jobs and, and, and build. So it's a long, what we call long-term control. Finances are worth 30% of the rating, so that's where are your reserve levels today and what has the five-year trend been? Management, and you do have control over that, right? You have greater control over that. It's, it's, it's something you can control in the short term, budget to budget, as you're making decisions about reserve levels. Management, you're talking about things like policies, procedures, budgeting, um, and performance, that's 20% of the rating. Likewise, you have control over that as you're making decisions as a board throughout the year. And then debt and pension obligations are 20%. So that's, that's kind of the universe of the, the credit factors they look at. S and P on the right gets to about the same place, they have a few more factors. So the, I think the takeaway here is there are some things that you control greater than others, and as long as you are trying to manage those things effectively, you're maximizing your opportunity to improve the rating. Why is that important? Generally, the correlation is the higher the rating, the greater access you have to capital at lower costs, which makes capital projects more affordable. Now, getting from AA2 to AA1, it's not a tremendous game changer. It obviously would be nice to go to a higher level rating for a lot of reasons, but it is not going to be a game changer. It might be the difference of borrowing at 3.5 versus 3.6%. So it's not irrelevant, but it's also not something that's going to cure, um, you know, a capital project plan. And that's the approach on the local government ratings. All right. Fund balance and operations, page eight. What we've got on the left, the upper left, is your general fund financial performance. So when you're looking at that, that gold line are the operating revenues in the general fund. And we're looking at fiscal years 16 through 21, 21 meaning June 30 of 2021. So the gold line are your revenues, and then in the bars, you've got the dark green, which are your operating expenses, the brown is your debt service, and then the lighter green is your transfers out and capital. And so what you'll see is that the gold bar, gold line is above your operating and debt service, right? So you are structurally in balance and have it. You are paying your current expenditures and debt service out of your operating revenues, which is great. When we add in the, the light green capital, that's where in some years you are spending more than your operating revenues. But you're spending those dollars out of reserves generally. So that, that is in and of itself not a problem. You all have been investing over the last several years in a number of different projects that we've listed, the dollar amounts on the right-hand side, over the last roughly six or so years, you've been spending almost $53.5 million of county dollars, not debt, of county, of county dollars on capital projects. You've done some reimbursements when you have issued debt, so the net investment in capital over this period of time is almost $44 million. And that is not funded, um, funded through debt. That is pay-as-you-go cash contributions for capital, which is a significant amount for, for pay-as-you-go over this, you know, less than a decade, about $44 million. And then you'll also see in the bottom right where, uh, you have issued debt over this period of time. We issued, uh, debt in 2014, 2017, and 2020. So when you push all of that together, um, you know, we've got upwards of a very bottom-right bullet. bullet, upwards of $125 million over this period of time that has been invested in capital. Some of it cash-funded, some of it debt-funded. What you can see in the bottom left is how your gen, general fund balance has evolved over those years. It has been moving down, right? Because we have been spending some of those monies on capital. You have not relied on debt exclusively to fund those projects. 2021, financially, was a great year for the county. It was a good year for a lot of local governments in North Carolina. You can see your, your dark green unassigned fund balance went up significantly. It was a positive variance to your budget, so much so that you were able to make about a $10 million transfer to your capital reserve. That's why we're calling in that bottom chart 2021 adjusted. I believe that transfer was made after the close of the fiscal year, but it was $10 million that came from the unassigned fund balance essentially in the general fund and moved it over to the capital reserve. And that was a major, a major improvement in the capital program that we're about to get into compared to where we were a year ago.
So paraphrase that. And that is 125 million in capital improvements, and of that, we took reserves of $44 million.
Yes, sir.
So we actually took reserves, rather than financing it, we actually paid for it as we went.
Correct. And then 2021 was a great year, and you'll see on the next slide.
And let me also point out that primarily the bonds were for school projects. Zach's not correct. 38.4 school projects in 2014, 35.9 million was school and county projects. I'm not sure how much of that was county project.
Some was Maxwell Center, some was Southern Wayne.
But that's school.
Right. No, no, or was it earlier? This was early, yeah, in Meadowland.
In Meadowland, right? So most of the debt basically is the school debt. So about $5 million over to Maxwell Center, right?
I can't remember how much it was, but, but part of it was Maxwell Center.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was about, I think it was about $20 million of that 35 that was for schools.
And the $10 million we moved were basically from COVID funds?
No.
Well, it was.
That $10 million right there was actually where we borrowed $10 million for county projects. Craig, hit me on that.
Steelman, Firelu.
Yes, Firelu.
Steelman.
Software.
Software.
Yep. Okay. But those were county projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so talk about the fund balance on page nine. The left-hand side shows you the progression of your, in the dark green line is your unassigned fund balance. That's the component of the general fund fund balance that has the least restrictions. Y'all have the greatest control over. And then the lighter green is your total fund balance. So continuing with the discussion we've had, you have been spending down that fund balance as part of funding capital. We know that. You have been able to demonstrate compliance with your policy, which is the red line. We want that unassigned fund balance at or above 14%. You may have been a tad below it in 2020, but basically call it right in compliance. And with 2021's results, you, you go back to a, a higher level where you were in 2016 and 2015. That's the, the dark green line, solid line. The dotted line is the result after you made the $10 million transfer to the capital reserve. So it brought that unassigned fund balance down, but it's still well above where you were the prior year, and it puts you comfortably above your policy. So even with that $10 million transfer to the reserve, a significant improvement in that fund balance picture and gives you some room to breathe above your policy.
So the dotted line is as it sits to the, or I'll say when this was printed. Is that correct?
Is that the what?
The dotted line is where it sits now.
Correct. That's right. That is, that is basically post the transfer. That's, that's what the 2021 audit would, will show or does show.
About the 26, 7, 8% deal.
That's right. And when you look at the comparison on the right, so the gold bars are Wayne County, and we've done it three ways. We've shown your, this is just your unassigned fund balance. That's just that single component of fund balance, and it's the one that your policy is tied to. So the Wayne County 2020, you can see you were, you know, just a bit above 10%. Then we showed what the 2021 audit showed, which is a little above 30%. And then after the transfer, you're back to the, you know, the 22, 23%, right? So those three gold bars just give you perspective on how y'all have evolved from 20 to 21, and then once the transfer is made. So that bottom gold bar is really where you are today. And then we've compared you to those national counties in light green, and the North Carolina counties in dark green. And when you compare that, that bottom gold bar here, right here, this is really where you are, you compare very favorably, particularly to your North Carolina peers. These, these green bars are the median for the peer groups, AA1, AA2, AA3. And within the peer groups, you can see there's a min and a max, min, max, min, max. So the median, you're right on the AA2, little bit below the AA1 median. And so what that tells us is, one, you've gotten back to compliance. Yes, it's down a little bit from where you would have been had you not made the transfer, but with the transfer, you're still in compliance, and you compare well to these medians. And I think that, that leads us to the conclusion that that fund balance is at a good spot. You know, we're going to be talking about going out to the bond market for some of the capital projects. We feel like this would be a very good story to discuss with the rating agencies, with the lenders, with the Local Government Commission. So feel like with that adjusted 2021 balance, it's in good shape for those discussions. And it's, and it does still provide you some cushion if there's an unexpected event on the revenue side or on the expense side.
Let me also have a good comment, and that is next year, at the time that we will actually be going out for the bond market, that will even look much better because of our reserves would increase because of our 4.5% tax increase of last year, which is being added to our fund balance. Correct?
Well.
Because we set it aside for that.
Yeah, we, we've got, it is in fund, but it's part of the designated fund balance. That's, yeah, this is, that, that 4.4 or 4.5 pennies you instituted in '22 does not show up in this number.
That's correct.
So you've got reserves.
Right.
Dedicated for capital above and beyond what we're showing here. This is, this is just the general fund.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, so again, you have a good policy with fund balance. We have been spending fund balance down over the last five or so years, but for capital, not for operating. And in 2021, not only did you get back into compliance, but you were also able to make a significant transfer over to the capital reserve. All right, talk a little bit about debt on page 11. This is your debt profile, tax-supported debt, and we've gone back in time. So that graph on the far left goes back to 2014. So while we were investing in capital, that 125 million of total capital, some of it was cash, some of it was debt, the debt service was increasing, right, in those gray bars. The colored bars are sort of current year going forward. So in fiscal year '22, you'll see the total debt service for your tax-supported debt is about $8.8 million. Next year, fiscal '23, it stepped down a little bit to 8.6, but we also know we're going to be talking about some new capital projects. So this gives you a sense of how your debt profile has evolved since 2014 and what it's set up to do going forward. Generally, it's stepping down. There's a big step down in 2027. Total amount of debt outstanding in the bottom left is $72 million. Of that, about $24 million was issued for non-school purposes, and about $48 million was issued for school purposes. So that gives you a breakout of the debt you have issued, what's for schools and what's not for, and what's for non-school purposes. Everything on the books today is paid off by 2037. And on the right-hand side, you can see by fiscal year, the principal payments, the interest, the total payments, as I said, 8.8, stepping down to 8.6, and so on. And under the principal column, you can see you're amortizing or retiring about $6 million a year. So a year ago, when we went through this, the total debt outstanding was almost $78 million. Now it's 72, right? You paid off about $6 million in the last fiscal year. The far right column is one of the first debt ratios we look at. It's called the 10-year payout ratio. What that is measuring is in the next 10 years, forward-looking, how much of that principal, that $72 million will have been repaid, and you're at 70, almost 71%. So said another way, 10 years from now, we're not assuming any new debt for the time being. 10 years from now, 71% of this debt will have been paid back. Higher is better, means you're paying back debt more quickly, you're not backloading debt. And in the bottom right, you can get a sense of the various pieces of debt outstanding, what the loan was, what the interest rate is, and the prepayment language. We were, are always looking for opportunities to refinance debt. We'll continue to do that. Different loans have different language about when and how they're prepaid, but we are watching all of those, and when we have an opportunity to improve the debt payments, we, we have generally taken advantage of that.
What about 2011?
That's a high rate. It's a 4.33%. It's called a qualified school construction bond, but you get a subsidy from the federal government for the interest expense. So it's, it may not be exactly 0%, but it's very close. It does, so you do have to pay interest, but your staff makes semi-annual submissions to the IRS, and they get a subsidy back for the interest expense. Okay? So that's what we're starting with on debt and debt service. I'm going to cover these next few slides a little bit faster than I did last year because y'all have seen it. These are some key debt ratios and your policies. So page 12 is that 10-year payout ratio. Remember, I said, how quickly are you amortizing debt? It's about 71% of this debt will be paid back in the next 10 years. That's the green bars on the left. The red line is your policy minimum. You don't want to go below that 50%. So in this case, higher is better. You're well above it, and, and so that's good. You're in compliance. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the comparison. So Wayne County in gold, the national counties in light green, the North Carolina counties in dark green, and for each category of North Carolina counties, the blue line is the min and the max. On this one, you want your bar further to the right. So you, you, you're not all the way out to 100%, but you're very much in line with the medians, and you're certainly not an outlier on the low end. So you're in compliance with a good policy. And what we're going to get to in these next couple of slides, the key takeaway is the county has debt capacity. Wayne County has debt capacity. In other words, it is a reasonable discussion to be having that you might want to do some debt for capital projects. So we're not advocating for any one project, and, and your debt capacity is not unlimited, but the amount that we're talking about in your CIP is a reasonable amount for you all to be considering taking on. Now, that's debt capacity. There's a separate discussion about affordability, how affordable is it? How do we pay it back? We're going to address both of those. But on the capacity side, y'all are in really good shape. You've, you have used debt historically, but you've used it in concert with pay-as-you-go. You've used it judiciously, and as a result, you have capacity. And so one additional debt ratio is debt to assess value. So the amount of debt outstanding as a percent of your tax base, this is page 13, your tax base is a little over $9.3 billion in total taxable property. On the left, your policy says we don't want to be above 2%. You're under 1%. You're at .79%. So the amount of debt outstanding, 72 million, that's the principal outstanding. As a percent of the tax base, 9.3 billion. The math works out. It's at .8%, well below your 2% policy. So again, you have room to take on debt and still be in compliance with your policy. And on a comparison on the right, I'll, I'll come back to the light green. Those are the national counties. Things get skewed a little bit on this ratio when you get outside of any one state, but within North Carolina, you line up really well to AA1 and AA2 medians. And you can see there are highly rated counties out almost at 2%, right? That's where your policy is. So you're not anywhere near that. On the light green, just as an aside, the, the national counties, many states have independent school districts that have their own taxing authority and their own debt issuance authority. So in those states, like South Carolina, for example, school debt doesn't show up on the county audit. It shows up on a school district audit. So you lose some comparability nationally, but North Carolina is truly apples to apples. And, and again, this is one where you, you look very good. You're in the strong category for Moody's there in the bottom right corner, gold bar, gold outline. Lastly, debt service as a percent of expenditures. So we go through a couple of different iterations on the math here, but the long and short of it is how much of your annual budget each year are you dedicating to debt service? When we do that math, the green bars on the left, you're at 7%. It's going down slightly each year. Your policy says we don't want to be above 12%. Lower is better, so you're in compliance. You have room. And on the gold bars on the, on the, on the comparison on the right, again, your gold bar lines up very well to the peers nationally and within North Carolina. So you're, again, in good shape here. You're in the very strong category for S and P, as shown in the bottom right corner. And as I said a few moments ago, when we look at all of these slides, these last three slides in totality, you have good policies, you've been mindful of those, you're in compliance. You have room within those policies and within your debt profile to take on additional debt. And so now we transition to a discussion about how do you go about paying for the debt? And what is the potential impact of funding the CIP as it stands today? Okay. So let's talk about the county debt affordability first. We, we have a county model, and we have a school model. This, page 16, is a county, county model. It's the detail behind the revenue budgeting that you all do for, for, for debt, okay? For, for non-school debt. And in your last budget, fiscal year '22 budget, you all, I'm on page 16, bottom right corner, you all did a number of things that really solidified the capital funding approach in your budget. And what you see on this chart on the right-hand side are all the different revenues that y'all budget for your county-supported debt by fiscal year. So we'll, we'll, we'll focus on FY23, which is the first year, that's the year we're about to go into. There was, and there's bullet points on the left-hand side of this slide that give you a sense of that. Column B, that was the '22 debt service general fund appropriation, $2.4 million. We have assumed that that can continue going forward. That was a baseline general fund appropriation from current year revenues for debt service. So we start with that $2.4 million. Column C, or the second bullet point, was instituted in the FY22 budget, and it was a dedication of the equivalent of 4.4 pennies on the tax rate towards debt service. That was a, you know, came out of the presentation we made a year ago, and then you all finalized your policy, or excuse me, your budget. That's a little over $4 million a year, significant source of revenue, an ongoing source of revenue for this program. And we're growing that at about 1.25% commensurate with some other growth assumptions that you all use as it relates to your tax base. Column D, third bullet point, is another $880,000 appropriation over to the capital reserves. So that's something you instituted and something that we're assuming here will continue, right? So you kind of get the theme, different parts of your budget that we can track back to the budget document that you are dedicating for, for capital, for the CIP, not just debt, but for pay-go capital as well. And we're making assumptions that you can continue to make those dollars available going forward. Column E are the receipts you will receive from the departments that participated in the radio loans. radio loans, from different volunteer fire departments. Column F is an annual appropriation for PEGO funding, looking at sheriff's vehicles, EMS vehicles, general government vehicles, and IT replacement. That's that million one. There are about four different components to that for what we call annual pay-as-you-go for vehicles, rolling stock, and equipment. Column G is assessments that you are collecting related to a street assessment program that was part of the 17 bonds we sold. So you're collecting those monies from the taxpayers that are benefiting from that road project. That's only got a few more years to run, and a little bit of grant money in column H. So you sum all of those up. Column I, you're at about 8.7 million between those sources of funding that have been memorialized and included in your budget. We're assuming that they can continue to be made available going forward, year by year. Some of them are being grown, some aren't. And that is the starting point for the county CIP capital and debt affordability, okay? Separated apart from other parts of your budget. This is just to support capital on the county side. And so when we take that, and you transition over to this next page, 17, you look at 17, column J is what we just talked about. It's all rolled up into one, that source of funding, that 8.7 million, right? You see that under column J on page 17? That is the revenue that's available in the county plan. Now, to the left of that are your existing obligations. Column B is the debt for county purposes, non-school purposes, the debts that already has been issued. It's about $2.7 million and stepping down. We have not yet started talking about new debt. That's what's going to go in C, D, and E, right? So we're going to come back to that. We just have your existing debt under B, and we have your vehicle and your IT pay-as-you-go under F and G. So when we look at those, they're summarized in column I. It's about $3.8 million a year every year going forward, but we have revenues identified of 8.7. So as a result, when we compare I and L to one another, we look at column M, and you have annual surpluses, and fairly significant annual surpluses that were largely a result of what you all put in place in the FY22 budget. And this is going to give us a running start, a real running start, to the capital projects that we're about to discuss. And you're going to see, it's going to make the decisions about these capital projects from an affordability perspective. You've basically taken care of it. The other thing that's very important to note on that far-right column is your capital reserve fund. That had some money in it a year ago, not nearly as much as it has in there now. It's up to about $16 million, which is largely made up of the $10 million transfer that you made. We talked about that earlier, that one-time $10 million from your general fund. And the fact that in fiscal '22, you instituted that 4.4 pennies, but it didn't need to be used that year. So you've done a couple of things in the last six to 12 months that have significantly increased that capital reserve. So on paper here on 17, you've got ample resources, current year revenues as well as one-time revenues, to pay for the obligations you have. And what we're going to talk about in a moment is, what does it look like when we add in these major capital projects that you're discussing?
I've only got one question.
Yes, sir.
You have started with fiscal year 2023.
Correct.
But this year, 2122, we implemented the 4.4 cent tax. So therefore, there should be, is the 16?
Correct.
Million, including?
It reflects the 22 4.4 pennies and that $10 million transfer.
Okay.
Plus a little bit that was already in that reserve.
Okay, alright.
So we've got, and the 8.80. Okay?
Sure.
Alright, so that's the county model as it stands today. We summarize the school capital funding agreement on page 18, because we have a separate school model, right? We have school capital needs, and we have a separate school model. That agreement dates back to 2017, talks about setting aside $2 million of sales tax annually for school capital, that the balance of sales tax collected would be used for school debt service. Lottery funds would be used for school debt service, and those lottery funds have been reinstated. You might remember from an earlier grant that you all received, you had to forego lottery distributions for five years. This past session, the General Assembly changed that, and they reinstated that lottery earlier than we had been planning. So that's back in the mix. And you've also gotten some additional grant money that we'll talk about. And then there's also a few other details in this funding agreement related to the funding that you're able to free up, about $527,000 that could be dedicated to debt service. That was part of the agreement that started in FY20. And then finally, there's about $1,002,000 that was accumulated in a capital reserve. So that's the, sort of the basics of the school funding agreement. You can see it a little bit more clearly on page 19. And so like the county model, this is showing you on the left, the debt that is in place for schools. It's already been issued, column B. The pay-as-you-go in column D. We don't have any new debt in here yet. So we've got debt service in B, pay-as-you-go in D, and we've got the total payments under F, as in frank. And then we've got the various funding sources, right? We've got restricted sales tax under G. We've got the lottery money coming back in under H. The Edgewood Community School, that's the money that was freed up that could be dedicated to debt service, $500,000. The subsidy under J for those qualified school construction bond loans I talked about, that's the money that comes back to you from the federal government after you make the interest payment. And then some smaller dollars related to the Fremont Stars Fund over the next two years. So column M, as in Michael, is all the sources of funding. So like the general fund, when you look at column N, as in Nancy, you're comparing F and M. F are the dollars going out for debt and PEGO. M, as in Michael, are the dollars that have been identified to make those payments. And so you're a little over $2 million a year to the good. And on the far right, you got about $1,002,000 in a capital reserve. So the takeaway is, on the county side, you've got ample current year revenues flowing through that model, as well as a significant capital reserve. And the same is true on the school model, annual surpluses with a capital reserve. And so now we talk about, what is it that we might be funding in the next several years that we need to understand, how do we pay for it? And so your current CIP covers fiscal years '23 through '27.
Let me go back to the school funding.
Okay?
I was hoping that that surplus would show greater than that. We have committed to taking the balance of 1.2 million and dividing that up over three years for small caps for the schools. Is that correct?
That was the balance that we had in the sales tax.
Alright, so that is, okay, so that's basically an expense of the 407?
Yes.
Nope, that's showing as revenue.
That's a revenue.
It's just...
Okay, I see what he is. In other words, you got school pay-as-you-go, that's $2,407.
Right.
That's right.
And then you put the 407 over here as a go, okay. Why have you got lottery at 1.275? I thought it was 1.4.
The 1.4 is what we budgeted. We do, the 1.4 that you saw came from having a little bit left over in our account. The 1.2 is what I think that we'll get every year as an ongoing basis. So we can look in our project account anytime and see what's remaining. And that 1.4 was from what's remaining, leftover funds. The 1.2...
So we're not anticipating any increase in our lottery?
It's hard to say. I mean, I haven't, the 1.2, I looked at the last few years, seems to be about the median of, you know, it's been up and it's been down. So we might be able to tell after the first couple of payments what it's going to do. It's just hard to know right now.
And then the sales tax, restricted sales tax, you got that the same amount for all those years?
So we have been budgeting large increases in the sales tax. At FY23, that represents roughly about, I think it was 11 or 11.5% increase based on what the county was increasing their sales tax by. We are being conservative in the growth because, and I know we've had this discussion...
But you've got zero growth.
Well, it's very hard to predict because we have had so much growth. At some point, we feel like it is going to top out. I mean, it just, it can't continue to grow the way it has been. I mean, that could be changed. It's just, we prefer when we're making these type of predictions to do more conservative growth estimate.
Yeah, and I believe that in last year's book, that number was closer to 6 million on the restricted sales tax. So, you know, we are up reflective of what you're experiencing in your collections, no doubt. I guess, just to reiterate Allison's point, I mean, there's a point at which can this sales tax growth sustain itself? And I don't know the answer, but it's...
Well, let's use some common sense here. If in fact, you've got inflation, which they say is 8%, I dispute that. I think it's about three times that, but anyway. If everything goes up 10%, I'm going to round it up 10%, then your revenues for sales tax will go up accordingly. In other words, that's why...
Not quite as much.
Yeah. Well, and it may not be, but I'm just saying, if you get a percentage of your product as sales tax, and it goes up 10%, then your tax is going to go up 10%. Trust me.
I agree. And we had this discussion when we were making this presentation. It is very difficult to project because if the prices...
I just want to make sure everybody's aware, this is an extremely conservative...
Well, I think Morgan also made a great point. You know, usually after inflation comes a recession.
Yeah.
So there could be that built in. So by keeping it kind of constant.
Alright, good enough.
Sales tax, the 10%.
Yeah, the 10% sales tax. I hear you.
And, you know, I mean, I think they're all valid points. I think there are people that spend their entire careers about what's going to happen with inflation and sales tax. The good news is, this...
I don't want to belay this, but here's why. I'm kind of focused in on this. In our discussions with the schools, they have a $4 million, $4 million BBNT truist loan.
Yes.
I was trying to find some way that they could have additional revenues for their general fund expenses. They, like us, are getting hit with the fact that they need to give employee raises and so forth. And some of these are local dollars.
Right.
So I ran the flag up the flagpole in regards to possibly advancing dollars out of this fund, the capital fund, to pay off the $4 million, thereby releasing $1.4 million, I think it was, 1.4 annually, that they are paying out on that loan.
I can't remember. I thought it was 600 or something.
No, that's the 600. But anyway, they're paying out well over $1 million a year on this loan.
On those loans. Gotcha.
So if we went ahead and advanced the dollars out of their sales tax, advance it, pay it all, then that freed up 1.2, 1.3, whatever, in the general fund.
Well, and I think when we get to the page that bakes in the capital improvement plan, it's page 27 for the schools, it'll, you'll be able to get a total picture about, are there some dollars there that we could comfortably use?
Good enough.
Alright.
Thank you.
So we'll talk about the CIP capital improvement plan. As I said, 23 through 27 is the timeframe that it covers. And there are details in the appendix, Appendix A, if anybody wants to get into the details. But what we've got here on page 21 is very high level, across the top of the fiscal years, and they total up on the far right, and the uses of funds, that is, what are we potentially going to be funding? What had been requested and vetted? And so you can see, there's line numbers for each of those, lines 2 through 9. You can see each category. Major capital projects for schools on line 3, there's a footnote 1, that includes, major capital projects include for the county, it's Health, DSS, and Detention Center. And for the schools, it's Rosewood, Fremont, and the Community College, it's the site building. That's what's made up on lines 3 and 4. Then you can see general fund departments. Out there in 2026, in the general fund departments on line 5, there's about a $5 million placeholder for the Maxwell Event Center project there. All in, over this period of time, it's about $154 million of projects, heavily front-loaded in FY23 with those major capital projects. And so the bottom half of this page is where the funding is coming from, right? So this is going to tie back to your CIP, and we've integrated this. Departmental funding, ARPA funding at a little over $11 million, DSS, state funding, schools have PEGO from the agreement. We've got $65 million of debt that we're going to be modeling. That's going to cover DSS, detention, and site, the site building. So that's the 65 million. That's really the only debt that we're going to be modeling up in our models. The rest of this CIP is paid for from these other sources, notably on line 19, the estate appropriation for Rosewood at $20 million, and the total grant funding for Fremont, which is 24. That was an initial grant of 15, and you came back and you got another nine for Fremont. So that's the 24 million. And then there's some additional PEGO and/or reserve funding. So we're at about $154 million all in, and that's up from a year ago, that was about $110 million. As I said, there are a number of details. If anybody wants to get into any one of these line items, if you go to page 22, you'll see greater detail what's in there, alright? And you can see it, again, set up by fiscal year, excuse me, major projects, county general fund, annual general fund for vehicles, equipment and IT. So it all rolls up to the same grand total of about $154 million. Yes, sir?
It's 24, I suppose we get.
It's 254 million.
That's, so 2023, you're saying 122 million?
Correct.
Okay, so this 154 million is going to be...
Over the total five-year period.
Over the total five-year period, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So '23 is a big year.
Okay, okay, yeah. Because I was a little, I was like, hold on, okay, okay. Because you just said 110 last year, right?
Pardon me?
You said 110 last year.
That was for the total of the five years.
For that five-year period. Okay, okay.
So the 154 and the 110 are comparable. It's a five-year total.
Okay, got you. Okay.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I want to make sure I understand. It's $24 million. The other nine from where else?
So the, there's something called the North Carolina Needs-Based Grant Program through DPI, Department of Public Instruction. You, originally, there was an application and an award of $15 million. And then I believe there was a supplemental application. In the latest round, the announcements were made in March, and y'all were awarded another $9 million for that project from the same program.
And we should be hearing what those bids are and the guaranteed maximum maybe next week.
Okay, yeah.
I hadn't heard any update. They were very pleasantly surprised, by the way, at the bids. But there was some question in regards to some spill as far as overall costs. They're working on that.
The working estimate we have on Fremont total cost is 25.2. So there's 24 of grant money, and then the match that you all are required to contribute is 1.2 to get the 24. So the 24 of grant, the 1.2 match gets you to 25.2 estimate.
That's what I was getting to. Okay, so we got a couple 1.2 there. I got it. Thanks.
Now, these...
Now, these out years of 24, 25, and so forth, we're not going to get into where these estimates are coming from.
Yeah, no, the, the-
ARP funding of two, over $2 million, we don't know what that is, do we? Y'all evidently must know what it is. You came up with 2,122 and $136, so you must have something that includes that.
That's the kind of guy.
And there's a, there's a breakdown further back?
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll get to that later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a total ARPA fund of 11.1, and those, those dollars, I know you know this, they're very prescriptive on what you can use it for, and there have been certain projects that have been identified as eligible for those, and it just works out to be those amounts per year. But the only debt in this five-year horizon is the, the 65 million. Those, the rest of these projects are being funded between grant, ARPA, and I'll call it general pay-as-you-go. So if nothing were to change over the five-year period, you're paying down about $6 million a year on the debt you have, and we're issuing potentially about 65 million. Now, next year, something new could pop up, I realize, but this is the only debt that's expected as of this current plan in the next four or five years.
Which is not really bad if you stop and think about it, and that is, out of 122 million in improvements, we're borrowing 65.
In the first year, that's right. And out of 154 over the five-year period, you're only borrowing 65.
Right.
The rest is being funded from your own resources, cash, or some of these outside dollars that have been awarded. It's, it's significant.
It's phenomenal, yeah.
Outside funding.
You're borrowing 50 cents on the dollar.
And what you've done in your budget last year has helped tremendously in your position to be able to take that 65 million on and all that pay-go. I mean, you're going to see that in a moment, but you're really well positioned. All right, so-
We're running a little bit behind, so.
Yeah, got it. I know there is another topic behind me.
There is another topic you don't want to be here for.
22 is a little more detail on your projects. 23 is just restate, it's all the same, it's the, it's the total 154 million. And so when we bake this all in, page 24, this is where we're saying, we start with your existing debt that you've already committed to, it's on the books, 72 million, that's the green, you've already issued that. And our model's going to show what happens when we issue this 65 million. We're using 20-year term, 4.5%, which has got about an extra 1% in it compared to where rates are today. We're being somewhat conservative there. If you were to do that, all of your debt ratios remain intact, so your 10-year payout, you stay above the red line, which is good. Both of these are below, they're definitely going up, but they're still below your policies, and your key ratios to your North Carolina peers still are very much in line. So that's why I said earlier, I believe there's no question about the county's capacity to take this on. I don't think it's going to jeopardize your credit rating, anything along those lines. I think it would be welcomed by the Local Government Commission. So from that perspective, you can kind of put your minds at ease. On the affordability side, as I've said a couple of times now, page 26, you saw this chart earlier. The only thing we've done is we filled in column C, and we filled in column E, which is basically, we're now layering in the debt associated with that 65 million, we're layering in the pay-as-you-go. So this is all in. This takes care of all the county projects associated with that 154 million that we talked about. We haven't changed the sources of funding. There's some DSS reimbursement under column K because they will reimburse you for a part of the debt service associated with that facility. And at the end of the day, you can see there, under Q, there is no impact associated with this. There's no additional tax impact associated with it. That was not the case a year ago, right? We had like 5.5 cents or so, and you managed through that, and you put a little over 4 in place. So there's no additional tax revenue needed. In column R, we are using some of that capital reserve, but in this scenario, it's not getting below 8 million. So my point in all of this is, for the county projects, debt, pay-go, all the debt that's already on the books, you've set yourselves up, as long as you can continue to budget according to column J there, and the DSS money comes in in K, and you keep those reserves over there, we have this covered, and staff can manage this from a budgetary perspective without needing to find new dollars outside of this model. And that's, that's significant. That's, that's the county share of the 154, okay?
Column E, where you are, annual CIP pay-as-you-go, 1.5 million. Why does that kick in in '28?
It's, you kind of want to look at D and E together. D is the pay-go that's actually in the CIP.
Right.
And remember, the CIP ends in '27, so E is just meant to say, look, we're going to have stuff after '27, let's assume, basically, I think it was probably the average of the prior years. So it's just an acknowledgement that pay-go's not going to stop.
24, am I looking at this right, that we're going to pay 31 and a half million?
Uh, that's right. We're borrowing 65 million, and now we're using a 4.5% rate, but if that were the rate, your total payback would be 96. And that's a pretty fast payback. It's a 20-year term level principal. You know, you could, you could try to look at doing a 15-year debt, for example. So it's going to save you money over the term, make those annual payments a little higher, but when you're looking at page 26, you know, you, you may find that there's the ability to do that if that's, you know, an important fact in the whole decision-making process. Okay?
And you could actually do that, based upon the fact of your, your balance.
Your balance isn't going below 8. Yeah, you just, you'd need to tap into that a little bit more, but it, there's probably somewhere between 15 and 20 years that works.
But does this work, like, if I do, if I do a loan, I mean, if I pay X amount over, it comes off the principal? I mean, does that work by that, or is that something-
Some, like, if you borrow from a bank, they'll do that. Like, if your payment is $1 million, but you pay a million too, they'll credit on the backend usually.
Right.
When you're selling bonds to the bond market, it's a little tougher to overpay.
So we just need to go A or N.
That's right.
And at that time, we will, you will discuss with us the option of 50-year-
Absolute.
20-year.
Right.
I don't know, they may have 17-year, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm not advocating, I just, you know, we don't want to strap our hands, you know, down the road for cash if we need it.
Right.
But there again, if we can save $10 million.
Yeah, that's pretty significant, when you're paying that much in interest.
We've got, we've got to consider the future kind of commissioners, the burden we put on them.
That's right, and, you know, there, there may be some additional pay-go that gets folded in here. I know the construction environment is, is pretty dynamic right now, and one of the things that we're working with staff on, particularly with DSS and the Detention Center, is the LGC, when they, when you go to them to borrow, they're going to want to know, for each of those projects, you've got bids and permits. So it's important that the project managers and the professionals on each of those projects are getting those schedules identified and set as early as possible, so we know with finance and management, when the audits are going to be available, because that's another part of the LGC approval, and when you get into the fall, things get dicey with when is the audit actually available. So we, we've started working with, with, particularly with Allison and her team, to look at DSS and detention and really understand when our bids do, the GMP and the permits. But as we approach that, absolutely, we'll be able to talk about 15 versus 20, bank financing versus bonds, things like that. But we should be covered here, under whatever scenario we go, as long as the project costs are in the range that we're assuming.
Yep.
All right, last, last slide on the schools is page 27, and this is their, their, their plan. I don't think much has changed here at all, because there is no debt running through their plan. There's no debt assumed for the school CIP. So B and D are the only things, it's, it's, it's the current debt and the pay-go. We've got the million-two there that we've got to contribute under column E for the Fremont school, that's the local match. But what you're going to see is column N, as in Nancy, stays positive. And so I think going back, Mr. Chairman, to the conversation we had, if there are loans they have that are outside of this model, there may be, between column N, which are annual surpluses, and column S, as in Steve, the accumulation of that, there may be some dollars there that could be in play to pay down some debt, free up money on the operating side of their budget.
So, so you're saying, you said N and S as in Sam? What'd you say?
Yes, I said, yeah, N, as in Nancy, is the annual surpluses that are rolling through this school model, right? We haven't changed, there's no debt being done, all, all we've got is the existing debt and the pay-go, because there's a lot of grant money on the school projects. There's, you know, there's that 44 million of grant money or so. So this, this is going to look a lot like the slide we looked at for the schools when we, we had just their existing debt, but, so column N is positive every year, and we're just, for the time being, we're just accumulating those annual surpluses in column S, and you can see that's growing.
So this just takes into consideration our contribution to the school, they don't take into consideration their 87 million of ARPA funds, correct?
Absolutely, doesn't take into consideration.
And nothing on the operating side, just the capital side, restricted sales tax for debt, and the lottery funds, for the most part.
So what it does show is that they, rather than they're being at a negative, that we were going to have to fund because of the loss of lottery dollars, they actually are going to have surpluses going forward. Now, the 1.2 million has already been spoken for, and they're getting that over a three-year period. But in 2023, you can see their, their balance is showing at 2 million, a little over 2 million.
Correct.
But it's not enough in order to pay off the loan, so that, that just isn't going to work, freeing up their, their-
Annual dollars.
Annual dollars. I, I was hoping we were going to see that that was going to be in the 4 to 5 million range, and wishful thinking, right?
You could take, you could, with the surplus you have in '23, make the $750,000 payment for this year, and then pay it off next year, possibly, I don't know if you, you might be able to pay it off next year.
You might be able to do it half now, half next year. I think some of those loans, particularly with Truist, it depends on what the prepayment language is.
But we've asked it to look at-
That's worth looking into.
I don't think that was any prepayment that I was aware of.
Penalty.
Yeah, I, I was just saying that if you, I know, Mr. Darby, you were trying to help them out there, like, if you wanted to take out of that surplus in column N, the 867,000, the payment, I think their annual payment for this upcoming year was 750, you could make that payment, I guess, for them out of this fund. And then next year, depending on how sales tax goes, you might have enough in the surplus to pay it off.
Well, if you can, reach out to them and find out what the status is, and let's see if there's any way we can help them out.
Say that again.
These basically are, hmm, sales tax, restricted sales tax dollars. Correct? And it's really earmarked specifically for facilities. We give them 2 million for small caps, and the balance of it basically goes to pay down their debt. I'm just paraphrasing here, and you've got monies going in and out and this, that, and the other, but the bottom line is, that's what it is. From all of that, they are going to have a surplus next year, is it this year or next year, of 867,000?
That's 2023.
So does that go into effect January, uh, January?
Starting July 1.
July 1. So it's the coming up budget year, they're going to have a surplus of 867,000. The 867, the next year, they've got 2.1 billion surplus.
Correct.
But all things stay the same. So to help out the school system, hopefully, we can find that if we took their dollars, that's the way they classify, dollars designated for them and their facilities, and we pay the loan, that frees up 850,000 annually next year for them to give raises. And with anything, without anything really coming from our dollars.
And then we pay it off the next whatever.
Well, no, it's, it's just-
Or you just start paying the payment.
Just making the payment. Now, the next year, I don't know where their loan balance would be, but at some point, we'll look at if the dollars are there, paying it off. But we're not going to advance anything other than their sales tax dollars, that makes sense? And it frees up their operating dollars, rather than us having to fill it with a dollar out of our bank.
That scenario frees up some in '23, 800 and some, and then it has an opportunity to free up more.
Because they've been using that for small cap.
Yeah.
They've been, they've been using that, small cap funds, pay off the debt.
Well, and, and that is a problem, so this board is aware of it. Commissioner Foster, I want you to hear this, because this is shocking.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
We all want to know, in fact, we might have a meeting here, and I'm not necessarily going to share it with them, but the point is, that their 2.4 million, 2.5 million that were set aside to repair these schools, they used that and paid 1.6 million for loans that they had.
On the energy stocks.
In other words, they did the same thing with those dollars designated for repairs of these schools as they did with the school lunch money. They shifted it around and used it somewhere else. And that's why these schools have not been fixed.
Yes. The money was given, but they, but they used it somewhere else.
You already knew it.
Yeah, you knew that.
Well, and we're getting the blame for all of that, that we're not funding, giving them enough money. Anyway, I'll, I'll hush. We'll look at that, we may reach out back out to you.
That'd be fine, we're happy to help look at those loans and see where there's an opportunity to pay down, accelerate payments, and not foul up the results here.
Exactly right. We, we don't want to foul up our situation, wherever we got reserved for them.
Right.
But if we can help them out, let's do so.
Let's move on.
My very last topic is just a little perspective on the current market. Rates have been rising, I think I alluded to that earlier. We're, we're seeing today, on the left-hand side, for a 20-year loan at a, for a county of your rating, in the very bottom of column D, the, the average rate would be about 3.5%. And we are running in our model 4.5, and so we're understanding the projects, DSS and detention are, you know, fall into early calendar year '23. So we don't know what the future will hold, but we have about a 1% cushion in our planning rate. We'll continue to watch that with, with what rates are doing and communicate with staff. And hopefully, as things evolve on these projects, we can get to the market sooner than later and lock in the rates. As I said, though, we can only move so fast. With the Local Government Commission in Raleigh, they're going to say, look, you're ready to borrow when you have bids, or in some of the cases, that's called a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, bids and permits. So we can only move on the financing so fast, but we are working with your internal folks and their outside folks to make sure we understand what the schedule is for bidding, so we don't lose any time unnecessarily. And that's all I had.
That's all you guys? Any questions? Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Williams, you have any questions?
I do not.
All right. Always concise to the point.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
We're going to take a three-minute recess if we can. And we're back. Commissioner Williams, are you there?
I am here, yes, sir.
Good to hear you. Okay, Mr. Huddy- Good to hear you. Okay, Mr. Huttigott.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Barnes called last week and, and I think there's some concern with the community, especially about school funding, specifically Dillard and Goldsboro High School. And she wanted, the NAACP wanted to have a conversation with the board commissioners about this. And we tried to set a meeting up and, and this was kind of what was the best time that was available. And so we've asked representatives from the community and Ms. Sylvia to come and let us know their concerns. So we'll partner up with you.
Could, before we do that, could I at least ask our county manager to explain to all of us exactly how school repairs are funded? How do we fund it? And I think that's a question that you all may have. So if you would go through the process of how county commissioners fund school projects?
We either fund them as a full capital project or we fund them through small capital funds that we give them on an annual basis. And I believe this year it'll be, it was 2.4 million that we did give them for small capital repairs for the schools. But once they get that money, that is up for them to determine the priorities of the projects and what is needed for each project. And it's also my understanding that the, there's still funds left available in that account. And my finance officer is shaking her head and saying, yes. So, so there should be some funds available for some projects to be done, especially these two schools. But again, the board commissioners, we help fund and set parties for the larger projects like we did for Fremont Elementary, like we've done for Thomas Road Elementary, the elementary capital schools that are needed. But for the basic repairs, unless it is beyond their, their normal operating budget or beyond their normal allocation for small capital, they don't come to us and ask. So Allison, did I miss anything?
Yes, sir. You didn't.
Okay, thanks.
I will paraphrase that. I like to paraphrase. When it comes down to building a school or a gymnasium or whatever, that's got to be on the school's capital improvement plan. Once it's on there, once we find the ability to go ahead and go with that project, this county is the one that authorized borrowing the monies in order to build the large capital project. Short of that is small caps and/or repairs to the existing buildings. That is designated, over the last two years, we designated 1.2, 2.5 million for them to use to actually repair those buildings. Keep them up, maintain them. This year, coming up budget
You guys still there?
Yes, sir.
I beg your pardon? This year
I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you.
Okay. This year is 2.4 million that we, this upcoming budget. Once those are designated, they go to the, to the school board and they determine how to spend it. I don't know what school needs to be repaired and where to spend the dollars and where the most urgent need is. It's up to the school board and their facilities department to handle that. Now, at this point, have you looked up that number that we have remaining in that amount?
Yes, from, from last year?
Yes.
From last year, it's roughly 593,000.
So there's 593,000 of the 2.5 that has not been spent. So when I hear in the community that we haven't designated enough money, there's monies there, they just haven't allocated. Now, there may be reasons for that. They may have outstanding contracts. You know, there, there may be some reasons that they haven't been billed yet. But the point is, that's how we fund school projects, both large and small. Now, just wanted to make sure we clarified that a little bit. And we're open to, to hear your concerns.
Excuse me, real quick, Chair?
Yes.
Just make sure that, you know, also that you know that even with that 500, 500, what, 93,000 you said left over, the, the other remaining, what would that be, 1.9 million? We don't actually know what all they spent that money on. You know, that's up to them what they spent it on. They may have not done what they were supposed to do with it. They may have, you know what I mean? But that's something that, you know, also that, you know, we, we might need to find out. Citizens might also need to find out as well. Everybody's held accountable when it's our kids. You know what I mean? It's not just this board. It's not just the school board. It's, it's all of us. You know what I'm saying? So we all have a level of accountability that we're supposed to have. So I think that's something that we also need to look at. You know what I mean? And look at what's, what's going to happen with the future, with the next 2.4, 2.5 million or whatever we do, decide to do each year. You know what I'm saying? That it's accounted for. You know, accountability is the main thing. You know what I'm saying? If the money's there, what are you doing with it? Why is it not, why, why are these schools not repaired? So I think that's something that we all need to think about and make sure that, you know, the people that we have in place making those decisions are the right people, you know, and are doing the right things by all the kids and not just a certain group of whatever kids.
So I want to, I'm Dr. Perkins.
Can you come up to the microphone so that Commissioner Williams can hear you? I appreciate it. I hate to ask you to do that.
That's okay. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Perkins and I'm speaking and, and a concerned citizen and community leader. And so I'm glad I did get the invitation to come on today because sometimes in community meetings and meetings and different things, you hear misinformation. And, and I'm one that loves to hear from the horse's mouth. And so I've been to some school board meetings. I've been to some community meetings and I'm listening to you. And I think for over the past few years, there's been some concerns because the fingers have been pointing. The finger's been pointing, especially when it comes to the school system. The county commissioners, we do know, are the ones who fund the schools. And so the question is, when the funding, and I'm listening to numbers, I'm also listening to and seeing concerned students come and speak, educators on record and off record, parents speaking, social media. And Commissioner Foster said something very important. Bringing individuals at the table and really accountability. And sometimes that can be a little sticky because listening to, to the, the information you're saying, even listening to over the past few years since 2015, some of these same building concerns regarding these schools are still concerns for the community, for the educators, for the parents. And, but I'm listening. And I was at a meeting last week with some of these same concerns. The school, some, some school board members were there. And one of my concerns was why we did not have a county commissioner present. Because some of the things, the questions that the community had, some parents had, couldn't be answered because no one was at the table on your end. So now the thing
Stop one second, real quick right there. I don't know what meetings you're talking about, but also, you know, I don't know if any of us was notified about a meeting.
I'm not even sure.
You know, so we gotta, we gotta look at that too. You know what I mean?
I'm not even sure.
You know, I'm gonna be honest. When I saw, I think I, one of the meetings Mr. Colbrook had, when I saw that, when I finally got the picture of the, the
I got you.
Fly, whatever he put out, it was at the time of the meeting. You know what I'm saying? Prior to that, I hadn't got an email or anything about the meeting. You know what I'm saying? So I can't be somewhere that I don't know about.
Yeah, that's understandable. I understand that.
I'm pretty sure the rest of the commissioners didn't get it either. So that's something that we have to look at as far as communication also.
And that's taken. I don't know who, I wasn't the host. I know that I was there and I know that there was a lot in, in, in previous times also as well. There have been plenty of community meetings with a lot of different individuals at face or there. And some of the part, the pieces or the individuals are not there that need to, can answer some of these questions. But my thing is, listening to the concerns about these two buildings, these two schools. And when you, when you're listening and on the opposite end, it's like enough money is not being provided. That's what we're getting from the school board. Now I'm hearing, you're giving the money, but it's up to them to decipher who, what gets done, the renovations to the school. I mean, I understand all of that with budget and line items. But as a community leader and a concerned citizen and an educator in general, it's hard to, to try to understand why some of, some of these same concerns over the same years. And, you know, inflation and all these different things are going on now since the pandemic. And some of these schools look horrible. They look horrible, literally. And some of you, I know personally, I wouldn't even want my children attending because they don't, they look horrible. But now, with, with listening to you, with you guys and listening to the, the school, some of the school board members, I can't, the collaboration does not seem to be there. And you guys don't, they're saying that enough money is needed, money is needed. They only can utilize what is given. But now as a, as a community, we don't determine the pressing needs. We get the concerns and we speak about the concerns, but we got individuals who we have voted in to take those concerns not lightly. And then when you across the news with some of the things that we've been hearing already in the community for years with these, especially Goldsboro High School, it doesn't look good. So now I have two concerns. Not only the, the state of how the buildings look, but the collaboration, because it's been a lot of finger pointing over the last few years of the money that's needed, then the money that's given, then we're, we're presenting, when I say we're, the school boards presenting information of what's needed, a lot of back and forth, a lot of back and forth. So I want to apologize on my behalf because sometimes, especially when the other parties are not there to be able to speak on their own behalf, when you get in certain parts of the information, it doesn't, it concerns me. So now my concern is, why is it if the money is given, the things are not being done? And if there's extra monies that can be allocated, because since 2015, we've been hearing some of these same, same concerns. So something has to give. It's the same concerns since 2015 on some, for some of these same buildings. So either enough money is not being allocated, I ain't gonna say if, enough money is not being allocated. And then the school board, they're not doing some of the things with the monies that they have based on the pressing needs of the community and the schools. And those are my two issues and concerns. Thank you. What do you have any questions?
I'm sure we've got some comments.
Go ahead.
First Commissioner Foster.
Well, first thing is, so recently, what school, what was the last school that we?
Greenwood.
No, no, no.
Fremont, we should be getting the bids in on Fremont in the next week, 10 days.
So I'm saying, what school was it the school board came to us saying more money needed to be allocated for?
Oh, that was Fremont, yes.
So they came to us for a school, right? If there was the issue with repairs and not enough money being allocated, I've been here a year and some change. I haven't heard them come up here and ask for any more money. I'm gonna get direct to the point because I don't like being in the blame game or anything. I'm just, this is just as simple as I can say it. I, I haven't. I don't know if any other board members may have, but I haven't. So therefore saying enough money hasn't been allocated, one is a problem in my eyes. If there isn't, why have, why haven't they came to us and said that? So now my responsibility and my accountability goes back to them in saying, why haven't you done what you're supposed to do? And if there's a bill or something that you cannot pay, why didn't you come back to us and say that? So that nips that in the bud right there. So, you know, if you come to us for a school, you can come to us for repairs.
I agree.
So every, all the citizens know, you know what I'm saying? So it's not a question of blaming us for something that we really don't have control of. You know, I mean, I've been, I was at the city council, I'm here. You know, we got blamed, we get blamed for a lot of stuff that we don't even have control of. And that's one of those things. We don't. All we can do is allocate the money here. That's it. Now, if we give it to them and they spend it on dish rags, all we can do is get mad that I know I don't know anything else we can do. So I think that citizens also need to understand the structure of politics, the different levels of who you hold accountable for what and everything also. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, we can eliminate a lot of processing and get things done and get things done a whole lot smoothly. So that's it.
I agree.
He articulated it very well. He did a good job.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to comment in regard to the funding. This board is actually funding the school that's also going to be on dates. And I think the, the, the real question is, the board, the, the, the Wayne County Board of Education, if they know their serious needs in other schools before they decide to open up another school, they should try to repair those schools. I think this board has been really adequate when it comes to trying to fund the school system here. There's definitely a lot of needs, a lot of needs. But I think that's the first thing I would address the school board and then, you know, take it from there.
A lot of my frustration over the last 10 years is the laws that are written that basically puts the school board and the county commissioners at odds. The laws are written basically that we, as a board, are to borrow the dollars in order for new facilities. And we allocate them dollars for them to do the repairs. But once, once that happens, and it's like a line item, once it's designated, we can't go to the schools and say, hey, you need to fix this, this and this. It's their decision. They are an elected board. Now, I don't want to throw them under the bus either. I'm saying that they are basically looking to their facilities manager to determine where best to spend those dollars. So I know you've got a lot of advice, but I would suggest that you reach out to, one, the schools and find out when their facilities committee is meeting because Dr. Harold will be at that meeting. And that is where you all need to make your voices known of what, where you feel like priority needs to be. But you, you're really going to have to deal with the school board. I hate to say that, but that, they're the ones in control. They're the ones that determine where those dollars are going to be spent. Now I do know, and you know, everybody knows, that the schools got a nice source of funding from ARPA funds, a large dollars. And I know that they're spending those dollars and making a determination how they could spend those dollars to improve the schools. You need to be involved with that to find out where they're spending those dollars. If you feel like it's a better priority at Goldsboro High or, or, or Dillard Middle, wherever, you, you need to be in the room advising them what your community feels.
I think the thing about it is, because when you're talking about line items and all those different fiduciary things, that as a citizen and a community leader, I'm aware of. When you're in the, these rooms and at the table and you're listening to the monies that have been given, then it goes to not giving enough. And like a Commissioner Foster said, I'm in awe just to hear that all these concerns, maybe this, this stuff goes way back. I remember when the conversation with Edgewood and all those big things were going on. Attending all of those. Oh, I remember. Yeah.
I remember.
Yes. And so it's, it goes back to even then with a lot of different things. But when you keep hearing, that's why it's important who you do have in the seat, because you're listening. And it's, well, you know, we asking, asking for money with the school, the county commissioners, this, that and the other. And even with the schools that have been built, I do understand there's two grants that may due for these schools to be built majority of the way besides you guys putting in what you guys did. So that's, that's a plus. But with citizens, they don't understand that. So when they're thinking, the school board is wasting all this money on these schools and the county commissioner is this, where they apply for these grants that funded majority of these new schools that are about to be built. But on the other hand, some of these same concerns that the community does have, and you're saying we got 593,000 that's left, you're saying, which I do know, when you, when you, when you allocate money, you can't go behind and say, well, I need to when you, when you allocate money, you can't go behind and say, well, I need to, these receipts to show, it's, it's up to the school board. So now, it's not the school board saying, well, the county commissioners, the county commissioners, the county commissioners. They haven't done, they haven't done, and you haven't even asked these repairs and these different things that are being asked of, of now, this, it just didn't start in 2022. They, it's, it's, the buildings have went down over the years. And so you mean to tell me, Commissioner Foster, you saying a year and a half and no one has came to ask about monies, extra monies, additional monies if, if needed for these particular schools and there's some more? That, that's a concern, but I appreciate the information that, so when we start going into these meetings, because I'm about, we got to get to the bottom and holding people accountable, not he said, he said, she said, and it be all this misinformation, not pointing the fingers. And if there needs to be more collaboration between the two, then that needs to be done because there's a lot of myths out there that has you guys been the bad guys, I'm telling you.
I've heard that.
Literally.
Anybody else got any?
Um, well, they've, they've alluded to the fact that we basically just giving the money and we don't have any control over it after that. The next thing, Joe mentioned about the ARPA funds, and I think they are using some of that for the, I think they're putting a roof on Goldsboro High School now, I think that's what they're doing, looked like it, I left the library the other day, they had a lift and all. The other thing is, and this doesn't have anything to do with operations, but it does, because this is kind of what put them in a bind, back, I think it was in 2017, when they, when the board voted to go, to reduce the class size in K3, that was not funded by the state, that was about two and a quarter to two and a half million dollars per year, from what I understand. For five years, that's 11, between 11 and 12 and a half million dollars of money that's been out of county funds that's been spent on.
County school funds.
County school funds, which is basically coming from the county.
Yeah.
That that's been spent on paying those teachers for something that was not funded by the state. Um, you know, that was a 5-2 vote. And so that's, that's where some of this, some of their issues starting, if not a lot, if not all of them, in my opinion. Um, you know, so some people want to kind of throw darts at, at us and, and majority of us have not been here about a year and a half, like Evan said. And, but you know, we might want to talk to, I think Ms. Burden, Rick Pridgen, Lynn Henderson, Arnold Flowers, and Raymond.
Rick Pridgen, he gave him.
Well, I'm just saying, this is the people that voted for it. Lynn Henderson, Ms. Burden, Rick Pridgen, Arnold Flowers, and Raymond Smith voted to do that K3 class size reduction when the money was not there. And the finance officer at that time was asked, can we sustain this? And he said, no, and they still voted for it. So that's 12 million dollars that could have been put towards something else. So I'm not a finger pointer, because my grandma always say, what you point one is three more point, that's usually, but the facts are the facts, so.
Okay, any other comments from the board members?
Ms. Pridgen, just make sure you have my, if you have my, I will give you my email address, invite me to your meetings and I'll make sure I show up.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And we do appreciate y'all's concern.
And believe me, we've had some of the same conversations amongst ourselves, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I, I called for this meeting after I sat in the meeting a couple of Thursday nights ago with school board members and like she said, the questions was asked per of the county commissioners, because people did not want to answer questions that they said was your responsibilities. So, when I read that article in the paper that had been written by those sixth grade students at Dillard School, I was so hot, I didn't know what to do. When those students, and when I went to, to the school, I met with Dr. Harold and Mr. Ray. And they did not, the only thing that they said was that when the state board of health walked in that school unexpected and did that inspection of the school, they did not find the mole and mildew, they found some, some, something else. When they talked about the roaches, the rats in the schools that those students are walking on every day when they walking down the hall, this is nerve wracking, it's disgusting for our county that we pay our taxes in. I talked to Mr. Harold, Dr. Harold and Mr. Ray about the age of Dillard Middle School. My understanding is that Dillard Middle School is the oldest school in this county. It is leaning on a promise, that's how old it is. They cannot keep putting unfitted jigs or puzzles into a big puzzle and make it work. I talked with them about, when I read in the article where the children was asking, why were they getting new schools? Why weren't they getting a new school? When Fremont, the base is getting new schools and their schools are still old. That's a, a concern. We need to put money, I sit in here this morning, I intently listen at the, but about what you all talked about, the budget, I heard no mention in that budget of nothing to be built for Dillard Middle School. That school is gonna fall down. I wouldn't be surprised, according to what I learned, anytime, because it cannot keep standing as it stands now. We should be ashamed of ourselves. And like I told the people a couple of Thursday nights ago, when we were at Rebuilding Broken Places, my job as the president of the Goldsboro Wayne Branch NAACP is to get rid of every elected official and bring some new people that are willing to work for this county and work for these students. I don't care who it is. If you can't do your job and do what you have promised these people, if they went and voted for you, whether you had opposition, nothing, I'm gonna find everybody some opposition. You can rest assured of that. In 2024, 2023, whenever we come back, we gonna have new people that's gonna be willing to work and make sure that every child in this county has the best buildings and the best education. I have people ask me, why don't you raise your hand and say the pledge? I said it when I was in the military, because I wanted to stay in there. But when that part talks about equal justice and liberty for all, that is not here in this United States that we live in. And I cannot raise my hand and salute nothing that is, is, is as corrupt as this place is now. I understand where the funding comes from, I understand what Mr. Harold told me, I understand about the many classrooms that we have now and buildings that are not even being used. We got work that needs to be done. We need to do our work and our job, whatever it takes, as long as God give me a to breathe and I can walk and I can talk, even if I have to push my way to one of them walkers, I'll be going to make sure that everybody have equal liberty and equal justice for all. Those children sitting over there in those schools, they depend on us, they don't have, they, they can only say what they put in the paper and what their teacher was helping them to write, to get the attention of the people in this county, and they did a good job. That's the reason why I asked these people, most of these people was at that meeting the other week, and they heard what was being said. It is disgusting and it's a shame. I go to a lot of meetings across this state and people say, you want to stand up and say, where you from? I am Sylvia Barnes, where you from? I don't want nobody to know. Because the first thing when we go out, I used to do that, and people would, because we're Wayne County, oh, I'd just say my name and sit myself down, let them, let them think what they want and do what they want. But I'm telling you, it is time out for this stuff right now. We will get the job done. We need a school, you need to take that budget, get somebody to look at that school and build a new school down there for those students off. Fremont starts out of debates, I don't care, but we need a new school at Dillard Middle School and we need to get it right away.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mark Corvus, I'm the gentleman that founded Operation United Goldsboro probably about five years ago. And one of the reasons that I did that is because of situations like this. I believe and felt that in Wayne County, there are, there are pockets of excellence. There are a lot of people that are volunteering and working, elected officials, doing the best job that they can do in their area. But I thought that if we got together, that we can do a much better job. So one of the things that I started were things like roundtable discussions, because I know that coming to the county commissioners or the board of education or the city council, you have three minutes and you get, you get no feedback, but you have three minutes to, to voice your concern and then you move on and in hopes that your, your topic resonates with the board and even brought up in discussion. And so I brought the roundtables, understanding that all of you cannot be in one place because it's considered a quorum, and I understand that. So, but the hopes of getting a couple of people so that the community can at least hear and understand the process, because it is a, it is a process. In relation to the meeting that I just had, what I used to do for the county commissioners is I would send an email to Carol, and then I would ask in that email, same thing with the city council, I would send an email to one person and say, could you disseminate it? Same thing with the board of education, I would send it to Ken Dirksen. I found that that wasn't the best way to get your attention. So this time, I looked up on the website and I found emails and I sent each of everybody an email. And Ms. Akar came, but she had thought the meeting was a little early and, and she was gonna come back. So I just, two things I want to ask, is that the best way to reach you if I want you to attend any of my meetings directly? Email you guys directly?
Sir.
Okay, all right.
And can I interrupt just a minute?
Yes.
I did get your email, but I had, I had something else.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
It was spread thin sometimes.
Absolutely.
But I did get your email.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and, and I understand that. And so I just, you know, I try to hold them, hold my meetings at least quarterly, I try not to look at the city council, board of education, look at your schedule and try to accommodate those things before I send it out. And, and all it is, is for us to really get an understanding, right now, our community, it's about perception and it's about reality. Perception is, is when my child goes to school and the air conditioning isn't working and they have asthma, the reality is that they're gonna suffer. That child and their parents don't care about the funding, they don't care about the two point, they just want to try to figure out what's, what is it gonna take for their child? And then my hopes is that we could get some other businesses involved to try to help out as well, just working together. That's the first thing. The second thing is that in talking with Dr. Perkins for a while, one of the things that I know that the capital monies are sent down, the other question I was gonna have is, how do you determine the supplements? How are supplements determined? Is it a request from the school? How do you determine the, the teacher's supplements? Because we're losing teachers because they're, they're going places where the supplements are bigger. How are, how are teacher's supplements determined?
One, in fact, that's a sore subject with me.
Yes, sir.
Because a couple of years ago, there was, we saw disparity and, let me see how to word this, I pick my words carefully now, I try to anyway.
Yes, sir.
But you gotta understand that there's a limited amount of funding.
Absolutely.
Period.
Right.
And this is not an easy job up here.
Yes, sir.
There's a limited funding. Most of the revenue coming in, before we divide it up, come from property taxes.
Yes, sir.
And property owners are very, very upset anytime you talk about raising property taxes.
Yes, sir.
The bottom line is, to answer your question, it does, the local supplement has, has got to be approved by this board.
Yes, sir.
And it increases the local funds given to the school board. The last time this was done, we allocated, I want to say, $800,000, if my memory serves me correctly, specifically to go to certified teachers, had to go to certified teachers.
Yes, sir.
That increase, we didn't want to go with a percentage, we allocated a certain amount of dollars.
Yes, sir.
Now, that is continuing every year. Once you allocate, then that's a recurring expense every year.
Yes, sir.
So we increased the amount of local dollars from the board going to the schools specifically for supplements. Now, on that one, we put a check mark to it, and that was, it could not be spent for anything else other than supplements.
Yes, sir.
So it's a line item specifically for that. But you're right, as other counties, specifically Johnson and Wake County.
Yes, sir.
Are giving these huge supplements, it's really affecting the school board's ability to have teachers here, because they are just getting totally out of line. But this is Wayne County.
Yes, sir.
As our county manager has come up with a phrase, keep it Wayne, it's Wayne. Wayne County does not have the tax base to support those huge supplements or all of the new schools and all of the new improvements.
Yes, sir.
This, it's tough.
Yes, sir. And, and.
And I hope y'all appreciate, it is a tough thing to bring in the dollars and then equitably divide it out.
Absolutely.
That's not just 800,000, that's, it's over the above, we're already, that's, that's, I mean, it's, I don't know what it is, I think we're like six or seven percent.
Yeah, this was an increase. This was not a total.
Yeah, that's not just, I guess, that's, that's, you know.
But that increase costs one penny in the tax rate. And you would not believe the calls that I got over my 10 years of being on this board, it was over that one penny specifically earmarked for teacher supplements. And I mean, I got roasted.
Yes, sir.
But we got it done.
Yes, sir.
And tho, those dollars are there and it was an increase.
Yes, sir.
So.
Well, I'm, I'm with you. I mean, my wife's, well, she's about to retire now, but I mean, she's been in the school system for 29 years and I mean, I get thumped in the head every once in a while from her as well. I mean, you know, like, y'all can't do anymore, you know, but, but I think she kind of understands now a little bit more, but, I mean, but there again, as he said, I mean, some of these other school districts are just, I mean, same thing with EMS service, like we talked about this morning, I mean, a 47% increase in another county, we're gonna start losing employees, just like the school system does. But I mean, the teachers are, you know, the groundwork for all of our students, because if they get a good education. Because if they get a good education, then they're going to get a better job, which we hope they come back and work here and, you know, but anyway.
It's, it's interesting.
Mark, I do apologize that I couldn't get back because I had another meeting.
No, ma'am.
You know, if I had a quarterly, you know, or something, you know, where we could put it on our calendar, because I went.
Yes, ma'am. John Barnes told me, you were there.
Yeah. And I, and y'all told me it would be, I mean, I, sometimes I get my meetings mixed up, I do apologize.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, for me, I definitely, because of everything that you guys are doing, I try to make sure I, you know, plan it out.
Yeah. If you could, that would help because, I mean, you can just look at my calendar. I, I just try to keep, you know, where I'm supposed to be at. And I did want to be at that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Because like Ms. Barnes said, I wanted to hear what the children said, I really did. And I'm still interested in what the children said because I'm such a teacher, I've been in some of these schools that you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and like I said this morning, you know, we, we got to look at our budget and say, well, we can trim things, not what we want, but what we need. And, and that's, that's what we really need to take serious. And please do make sure, and I hope you got my email, that we get it maybe a, a week before or something.
Yes, ma'am.
So I can plan better. That helps me a whole lot because I was looking forward to that meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that.
I've, I've got two comments, maybe Dr. Perkins, you can now answer this one. Ms. Barnes, Ms. Barnes referenced the two schools in our budget. Those schools are in our budget because the school board came towards and morning them in our budget. Now, Dr. Harold should have a list of, of facilities that they're going to repair or replace or whatever. Where does Goldsboro High and where does Dillon fall on his list? Because they've got to come to us.
Right.
We don't go to them.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and that's, I think, where the disconnect is.
I understand.
You know, there's a list over here, there's some money over here, where do we put it? And until they ask, we don't know.
And if I can follow up on that, you, you're exactly right. Do, do understand, we don't come up with the capital improvement plan for schools. That comes from the school.
Yes, sir.
So they've got to decide which schools they want to repair, replace, build new. It's their capital improvement plan. They bring that to us and then we have to try to find some way to fund it. That's where the difficult part is. But they have, they have to develop the plan. We can't go to school board, and we don't go to school board. Somebody tells me this all the time, stay in your lane, Joe. My lane is not going to the school board telling them where to build schools. They develop that plan, they as a board come and present it to us.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Commissioner Williams here.
Just a moment.
Commissioner Williams here.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to, yes, I just want to, you know, follow up in regards to what you said. In regard to the school schedules, if you, you can go to any of the school board members and they have a list of the schedule of schools that are basically what they consider to be important, most important and least important. And that particular, they've done a study and that study shows the schools. So I would, I would say, go and get that study and see which schools are on that particular list. It is the school board that actually put that together.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Let, let me make one point. We, we, we've been discussing, you know, as far as the, the school funding. But, you know, it's been tried on several occasions and the last time, on the quarter cent sales tax to go specifically for schools' needs. And it's been defeated.
Free time.
And, and, you know, the, the last time it was specifically pointed out, this is for schools, which affects everybody in Wayne County. Whether you've got a child or not. It's a, it's a quarter cent sales tax. What most people don't understand is you're already paying it. On a lot of small purchases, if you buy a dollar drink, it's a dollar seven, it's not a dollar six and three quarter. So you're already paying it, said that if we ever, if it ever comes back up again, this is something that needs to be passed. I mean, it's like two point six million dollars. That was several years ago, that's what it would generate, projected to generate was two point six million dollars. And as much as sales tax is now, or as much as purchases are now, sales up, it would be even more. So if it ever comes back around, as community leaders, you know, we would go to y'all's and say, hey, we need to get this, get this pushed, get this passed.
The concern even with that, since you brought that up too, is the, the people who would get hit the most is the individuals that staying in the city.
Yes, sir.
The individual that own property, that own houses in the city. When it comes to their sale tax.
Right.
That's what we're talking about, not the sale tax, but the, the property tax.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about sales tax. We're talking about sales tax. Oh, well, look, I agree with you on the property tax, forty percent of us are paying a hundred percent of the bills, I get you one hundred percent on that. I'm talking about quarter cent sales tax. That's everybody. Don't matter if they're, if they're coming through from Raleigh to the beach and they stopping by something, we're getting the money. So that's something that we really need to push next time. Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're running a little late. Yes, sir.
Alright, so I, I'll make it easy. My name's Ra White and I'm with the Department of Military and Veteran Affairs. And I am a concerned citizen as well. So I, I did attend the meeting because on both sides of the fence, I, I have a vested interest, right? It's part of what I do every day to try to make North Carolina the most friendly military state, right? So I, I have a couple of questions. My, my, one first question is, so the two point four million, is it go to, to repair all thirty-three, soon to be thirty-four schools?
Yes.
Alright, so not pointing any fingers, I just want to get to a, a answer so I can go back, go back with some knowledge. So if I, if I divide it up by thirty-three, that's approximately sixty thousand dollars per school. Right, so if you have a roof that needs to be repaired or air conditioner, condensing that go down, then we're, we're out of balance already. So I'm just, I understand two point four million sounds like a lot, but when you try to divide it amongst the amount of schools we have in the county, it really not.
Well, that goes back to having a working document and having it planned out that you're going, you're going to replace this roof in thirty years unless you have a bad storm. You're going to replace this air conditioner unit and this, you're going to replace this.
I do understand, I understand, you know, trying to have a working document to understand that, but life happens. Right, so there are some things that's unforeseen that we can't count on happening or plan for. So I'm just saying that two point four million does sound like a lot, but in the grand scheme of maintenance, it's really not. It, it's really about sixty thousand dollars per school. Like, my next, my next question is, looking at it from a military standpoint, the gentleman said that perception precedes itself. So I have the challenge of trying to continue to make Goldsboro appealing for Seymour Johnson to stay. Right now, the Air Force has did a study on our school system. And out of a hundred and fifty-five school systems around the country, we rank a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five. Right, so I'm trying to get to a point where I can understand and where we can get better at schools. So I'm, I'm asking the question, the gentleman, your, your manager, I said that the money goes for normal repairs. I just want to know what is a normal repair? So I understand, so I can understand how the money equates to each school, how we are divvying it out. I do understand the school board does have a list, they told me that the last time they did it was two thousand and fifteen. So this on the docket for them to do it again, so they can update it and get some more priorities done. I will speak about the base school because I did write some legislation to try to get the base school funded. I will tell you that the base school is coming at a discount because we're not paying for a lot of things that the school that's outside of the base is paying for. So we can't really continue to say that that's, we're, we're funding that school because we're not funding it totally. It's coming at a discount.
Still some funding though.
Yeah, but it's coming at a discount.
Discount or dis- discount or discount, it's still funding.
Right. So, but it, 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 it doesn't compare to a Fremont where you're going to pump twenty-four million.
But you don't have as many kids either.
Right, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just saying, so I, I just want to know, how can we get to the bottom, and then the money? The money that we deal out. And, and it's not your responsibility on how the school board spends it, and I understand that totally. But who is the checks and balances for the money? There have to be a check and balance. I understand you can't tell them how to spend it, but once it's done and we continue to have the same thing over many a plethora of years, who, where is the checks and balances? Do they do an audit? Do they do something to make sure the money is spent properly? Not you, but is there a check and balance? That's all I want to know.
Believe me, that question has been asked several times by not only gift board but pride boards. I haven't got an answer to it.
Do y'all have a copy of their budget? Do you look at their budget?
I think that is a, a open document, but I
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's on their website.
Okay.
But where the money being spent from their budget, that is not a clear picture.
Right. So those are my concerns. My, my concern is, I understand that y'all giving out money and I understand that we are a county that has a low tax base and so, so the money is limited. But so, since money is limited, we have to have some type of checks and balances so that we'll be confident that the money that we do have is being spent properly. And then the last thing is, because the military is a big thing for this community. ADM, which is your average daily membership for the schools, and just to be blunt about it, it's, it's a price tag on each student that goes to that school, right? So as we do that, as, we do not update our school system and do things, our airman will continue to fade to Johnston County. And then our ADM will continue to go down and our resources will continue to go down and our school system can't survive with the airmen going to other counties and living.
Okay, you, you brought up something I didn't, I, I haven't heard that figure. What is the school on base? What's it, um, what's the price tag? What would it be? I mean, you said, I know we're getting it at a discount, you know what the discount is?
The discount is the building that they, they actually, uh
You know what the money, what the value is of that?
I have the figures, but I don't have them with me.
Oh, okay.
I, I can get them to you though. I'll email them to you.
That'd work.
Alright, but the building is, is the library that's on the institution already that they use in the afternoons for airmen to take college classes. So, so it's a donated building.
Yeah, but that's
So I'm not trying to insult anybody or point any fingers, I'm just here trying to make, get answers. So when I stand before the secretary of Military and Veteran Affairs on why we can't get better, you know, what, what's going on in Wayne County? Because I'm responsible for it in his eyes, then I just need answers. That's, that's all I need.
And I didn't take it as pointing fingers, I just, I, I really, we have never, haven't been told what the price tag is or that.
They haven't really said a number. We do know if he just mentioned that it is a really discounted, discounted rate because it's already a standing building.
But it's still money that we're using that could still be used somewhere else. You know what I'm saying? For a small number of kids, there aren't that many kids out there. So that's the, that's the main thing, one that we also need to look at too. So it's bigger than what, just the discount of a building. It's about still money being used that could be allocated somewhere else because these kids are already in school.
Have they told you guys about the reason of STEM school? Have they explained the reason why they're starting this school? Okay, I guess not. So it all boils down to, because that's been a concern as well. It all boils down to that we're losing students to other counties, to other charter schools. And STEM schools are one of the, that's top notch now, the people are going
I can't hear. Okay, hold on just a moment.
Seymour Johnson, the, the, the school that they're getting ready to collaborate with Wayne County Public Schools is what you would consider a STEM school. I don't know if any of you know the background of what STEM schools and different schools are. But what they're, what they're trying to be proactive about, not only with the gentleman, what he said in reference to our community and our education system and the military, because if we, we do know the military Seymour Johnson Air Force Base is very instrumental to the monies and different other things in our, in our community.
Absolutely.
And right now and for years, it's, it's depleting how it looks when it comes to education and some, and a lot of other things, but really our educational piece. So this STEM school is a school that they're hoping to be proactive in with this partnership and bring in, because the school will be fifty percent, I don't know if they're explaining this to you, fifty percent civilians, which will be individuals that have no affiliation with the military and the other fifty percent will be military students. And so this, they're, they're trying to be proactive with this school, with this STEM school, because some parents, some families, they're actually looking for certain types of schools so that we won't continue losing students, which is ADM, which is the monies that follow students. Because if you don't know, once a child goes to a charter school, if they leave a public school and go into the charter school, that ADM goes with the child. When that child happens to come back during the year, that money doesn't come back. At all. So I know there, and I thought, you know, especially with you guys giving money for, at a discounted rate for that school. Because there's been a lot of concern, why this school, why this school, a lot of teachers, they're going to want to go there and this, that and the other. They're trying to settle some of this reasoning why individuals do not want to attend schools in Wayne County. I hope that answers some of the questions.
Okay, did somebody else want?
Yes.
I think we got one more speaker. Go ahead.
Okay. I attended the roundtable talk. I did go because I saw the brochure or flyer and it said that the children were crying. And they were looking for those who were interested in a solution. And they asked for parents, stakeholders, commissioners, they named quite a few. And what stood out to me was the word solution. And I remember I had came before you guys and I told you I don't like speaking, but I came before you guys, I felt compelled to do it. And I said that we needed a, a solution for our children. And crying, I'm like, okay, kids crying, as a mother, I went. I didn't know what they were crying for. I did read in the paper about the schools. And I've explained to you all that I have gone to the schools with some of my, the youth that I worked with. And one of the schools I happened to go into was Goldsboro High School. I'm now a Goldsboro High School graduate. That was my first time walking into the school, other than basketball games, you know, in my youth. I was shocked. I didn't know what the inside looked like. I just know that that building had been up for, forever. But I was shocked. And, you know, I came to you guys about their behaviors, wanting to help with those, with their behaviors and wanting to assist the families. But, um, school plays a huge role in the environment. And when I saw how they showed up for, you know, their, it was like open house. I went to the open house and they went and that was their norm. But it wasn't what I was used to seeing and it wasn't the type of schools that I had been into. It wasn't the same as the schools that my children attend. And it, it made me feel away from them. So after listening to everyone, I hear that you guys have the same concerns, that these questions have been raised. And I like the idea of that roundtable talk. And I remember coming to you and I was saying, in order to create a solution, it's going to take us being like twins. And, um, and, and seeing each other as, as such. So I'm only here listening and what I see is everyone is having these individual talks. And I like the idea that he presented and I look forward to seeing what solutions we can have when we do come together and have that roundtable talk. I understand why some of you guys couldn't make it and hearing you. But what I hear is everyone is concerned and that, that brings me joy to hear that. And I look forward to seeing ongoing, you know, what we can do if we have all parties together. And like everyone mentioned, holding each other accountable. Because there has been things that have been done and you guys have worked to implement and, you know, provide. So now it's time to come together and hear the cry of our children. So that's why I'm here. I am a parent, just like I'm sure some of you all are. And I'm just trying to be a part of the solution and hope that we all can come together. Alright.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I've listened to what everyone has said and, um, you know, I have a lot of issues with what was being said and, 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 you know, my main thing always is accountability. Anybody ever heard me talk, anybody ever heard me say anything, it's accountability. We have these schools in these conditions, but it took for kids to tell us, or tell some of us. some of us, why? Why? If anybody asks that question, why aren't we in our schools every day seeing what's going on and talking to our kids to know what's going on? Why are we having roundtables? We need to be at our schools, finding out the issues, talking to those principals, those teachers, those students every single day, someone. That's the issue that I have. Where are our organizations? Where are our churches, our pastors? Everybody, politicians, the whole nine, where are we? But we want to sit and talk, but what good is that doing? We've been talking long enough.
I personally wish I could ask, like, hey, after we go in, help as an organization here, I'm still waiting for my answer. I'm still waiting for just a MOU to go in.
Well, I mean, you know, for me, I, and I go to the schools. I talk to the teachers, talk to the students. Kids walk past my house, I talk to them, you know what I mean? I've wrote emails about every single thing y'all have said in here, to the superintendent and to the school board, complaining about stuff, everything. If every last one of us was doing that and holding them accountable, it could be different. You know, where is Seymour Johnson at? If the base wants the schools to have a better grade, where are they? We got to hold them accountable too. That's our biggest funding source. Everybody supports Seymour Johnson. We also need Seymour Johnson to support Wayne County. They support us financially well, but we need them to say, look, we're tired of this. We need better schools for all these kids, not this select group that's going to come out here on base. So for me, I understand what everyone is saying, but the problem is different, and the accountability is different for me. You want to sit and blame us or blame the school board? Yeah, fine, I'll take that. But you also need to look in the mirror, every single person, and say, what have I done myself? Why am I not in that school knowing this? And that's serious. Why are we at this point right now? This been going on.
For a long time, same stuff.
It's been going on.
Same individuals are coming, going in, working in the schools, doing this, that, the other, sending emails, sending stuff up to the state, doing all of this, still, still some wrong conversation.
Exactly.
And it makes no sense.
So it's time for a change, you know what I mean? And I think that, hey, once again, we can only do so much here, and I understand the funding, you know what I'm saying? The breakdown of sixty thousand dollars towards each school, you know? I don't know, you know, what, how that's going to be and how much repairs that's going to cover per school, but, you know, over ten years, that's six hundred thousand, what have they done in the ten years with that sixty thousand dollars? You know what I mean? I don't know. You know, it's a lot of different questions that can be asked, you know what I mean? So, once again, like I said, I've been here a year and a half, I know they haven't come back to us for any money, you know? And that's the main thing that I'm concerned with. If there is a problem, if we need to put more money out there, I think as a collective group right here, we will do that. We did it with the Fremont school. I think we will do it with repairs also. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to ask, after listening, what do you think as a county, every single person in this county need to do to make this right?
Ask and make your request known, because that's what's not been done from this school board, from my understanding and seeing. The perception was when citizens are coming out and saying, we need this, we need that, emailing this, and then it's, well, we have, and listening to some of these individuals who've been up for a year, and no, you mean to tell me no ads have been in? We such, in such a dire need, you got to ask, because if you don't open your mouth, people are thinking everything is okay.
When you go and walk in that school, and you walk in that classroom, you read with those children, you get their reading buddy off, go to lunch with them, or whatever your ask is for that day, and you see the smiles on their faces. Last year, I think it was last summer, or maybe it was, this is twenty-two. I had the opportunity to go out every day for about seven weeks and take lunch to different kids in the housing areas. They would see that green van coming down their street, that John Barnes with Rebuilding Broken Places, that us drive that van, you could just see the kid, just jumping up and down. They were so happy. Sometimes I would have some books or some magazines or something on kids. I would take them. They were so happy to just get something. They would come out there with no shoes on, no tops or nothing, they just wanted that bag and that lunch in. And, I mean, it was heartbreaking. Sometimes our eyes would be so full of water, we could, we would have to sit there and wipe our eyes before we could move on to the next house or to the next apartment. It is so much that needs to be done here, and that's what makes me think or wonder, do we have the right people sitting here?
Well, Ms. Silver, let me speak to that. I'm a parent. I volunteered in this county since nineteen eighty-four through the fire service and as a county commissioner, as a public servant as well. My girl's in the public school system. My wife works in the public school system. I have noticed, I got one that's twenty years old, seventeen and fourteen, and I've noticed a decline in parent involvement, okay? I mean, so I'm just saying, the parent involvement is the number one key, and I'm just going to use athletics as an example. You'd be surprised at the parents that don't support their children, that, I mean, I'm talking about some of them, I'm not saying the people that actually work, I'm talking about some of them that don't work, and you know they don't work, and they still don't go support their child. That's number one problem. Number two, if your parents were getting involved with it, get involved with the school, and I point back to athletics because that's something that I was involved in in school along with my daughters. But just in that, you got partners in the school system. Now, I understand you said you can't, you've not been able to get in the school system. You know, there's a whole lot of criteria, I guess you should say, you know, because of the safety issues and whatever. I mean, you know, I understand that part. But the parent involvement is your number one key, and I know we can't, you know, we can't be parents to everybody, but I get it. I mean, you know, I'll sit in the truck and watch them. You know, they look up in the stands, nobody's there. And that's heartbreaking as a parent. I try to support my young ones, you know, anything that they do. If we got something, if I got a meeting here and they've got a ballgame, I'm going to be at the ballgame. Or a dance recital or whatever. I spent five hours at the Paramount Theater the other day, on Saturday, like I wanted to, but I did. But I'm just saying. Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank, backdoor my way into everything. Out the support of, you know, we have to backdoor you, backdoor your way in. But they say, well, we can't come in and go you, but I just wouldn't say. Parents give you the permission. It just makes it easier, you have that support. But I have, I have backdoored even with the jails, you know, couldn't get you in jail, so. I bailed them down, kind of backdoor my way in. But what stood out to me, biweekly, I go to Bob's for our children, when they get in trouble in the house. We call it the developmental center slash detention. I go there biweekly. I saw nothing. Not one, one other child, any other race, but our young black boys. And what shocked me was their behavior. I went, I go there biweekly and just wait in jail, or hate to call it jail, because I work in our jail facility. Kids are, look, they work better than us. So I do think environment plays a role. These kids want stress relief. They want nice things. You know, they want to be proud when they walk into a home, just like, you know, we do, you know? Like, I choose to go to certain restaurants or Starbucks for environment. So that's why I started meeting with some of our teenagers, who I had a place to eat. I took them to Starbucks, and the environment, it matters. So I just wondered, like, is this the same children who are in trouble, this behavior? And, you know, they're sure going to be reading, I brought a visitor, we sat around, we read together. I chose a book that wasn't even in the field of the child, I went to the inspirational section, and the same children read, volunteered to read, loved, and they engaged, you know, the hands. And it was so well-mannered, but it had a potential there that was playing. So it makes me wonder if we need the same things. I see that, you know, it has been allocated, so, you know, I guess people will see, but, you know, I just test it out.
I appreciate all of y'all coming today, and I think we learned a great deal by sitting down and having a conversation, listening to you all. I think you all listened to us. I think we learned a great deal what our next steps are. Send us the invitation. Hopefully, our schedules will allow us to attend because evidently we need to have somebody there defending this board. But it'll give us more conversation. Solutions, I wished I had some answers. The estimates now are thirty million dollars to build an elementary school, thirty million dollars, forty million dollars to build a middle school, and fifty, just starting, fifty million on a high school. Now, just to put that in perspective, imagine how you were going to fund that. And that's why we need to come together, get some priorities. Where is our priority? Is it Dillard Middle? Is it Brogdon Elementary? Where's our priority? Get the school system to develop a plan, present it to us, make sure that we apply for every grant that we can think of, that's where our grant writer comes from, but do some things to try to find solutions, and we hope that we can do so. But we appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I can show you guys something.
And if you do hear anything back from the school system, please let us know.
And I can assure you, we'll be talking to some of those school board members.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I should say that we did have one by the school board.
I saw him.
Sir, what's his name?
And everybody got the same invitation.
Mark, get him. The gentleman that just left, could you get him? Yeah, tell them to send us that stuff on that school.
Mark, give him our email address.
Send us that information on the school, so we have like what it's actually worth. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. I'd like to see their presentation on the school systems, you know, the study that was done, if you would please. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I know that went a little long, but I think we were, we got a lot of information from that, because I think it was very important. Okay, anything further? All right, we are recessing this meeting until Tuesday, the...
Two o'clock.
The twenty-fourth at two o'clock, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Kayla, you're sending us all a calendar invite. You got to keep up with our calendars.
That's what I just told Mr. Colbrook, to make sure when he sends you guys the invites to the meetings, to also let me know so I can put it on your calendars, so that if you guys want to attend or are available to attend, you're aware of it.
Okay, so we are in recess.
Did you see what's on the school board capital out lately?
Yeah, three meetings in.